Good evening, everybody. It is, I gotta say, it is a thrill to see this many people in chambers. We don't usually get a big audience, so what, I know we've got quite the mix of people here for different things tonight, and just welcome to each and every one of you. It's exciting to see this much civic engagement, whatever reason you're here for. As a quick note, we do have need for a special meeting of the Housing Authority, so we're gonna do that first, and then we'll move into our standard business meeting. So with that, I will call to order the Arvada Housing Authority for today, October 7th, 2025. Ms. Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Chairman Simpson.
Here.
Chair Pro Tim Mormon.
Here.
Commissioner Ambrose.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Pfeiffer.
Here.
Commissioner Marriott.
Here.
Commissioner Rupert.
Here.
Thank you very much. Quickly, we have the approval of the meeting minutes from July 1st, 2025. Are there any edits or corrections to the record? Seeing none, those stand approved. Is anybody here tonight to comment on the Housing Authority items? Seeing none, I will close public comment for this. Reports from the secretary. Ms. Espinoza? There you are.
Good evening, Chairperson Simpson and Commissioners. At the July 1st, 2025, Arvada Housing Authority Annual Meeting, it was reported that the Arvada Housing Authority Housing Choice Voucher Program projected a $925,000 budget shortfall. The Board expressed concern at the time regarding the shortfall and requested a budget update within 90 days. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide that update. Since that time, HUD has informed the Arvada Housing Authority that it will receive the necessary funding to pay for rental assistance for current housing voucher program participants through December 31st, 2025. For the remainder of the year, we will not be allowed to issue any new vouchers, except for the eight vouchers that are project-based at the Legacy Senior Residences property. We will continue to decrease the overall numbers of families served through the program through natural attrition. Congress has not approved a 2026 budget, so it's uncertain what next year will look like. We expect that we will not be able to issue new vouchers in 2026, but the team will continue to monitor the outcome of the budget discussions and adjust our approach as needed to ensure continued operations. So there's no action item necessary on part of the Board this evening. I'm here just to provide the budget update, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Ambrose, or Commissioner Ambrose.
Yes, how long is the waitlist for the voucher program as it is?
Right now, we have just over 3,000.
3,000 people for how many vouchers?
We have a total of 562 vouchers.
Thank you.
And Ms. Espinoza, there's no update, as you clarified, on the 2026, so presuming since the federal government is in shutdown, that may not be coming expeditiously.
Correct.
How will we continue in January?
So right now, we have funding to continue through November. So December's still up in the air as far as getting our 20, or December 2025 budget, so if the shutdown continues, we'll have to have discussions with the finance team to see what we can do for the month of December, awaiting for the federal government to open back up. We'll continue operations as normal for 2026. That's what we do every budget year, so we'll continue our normal operations. But once the decision is made regarding the 2026 budget, we'll have to pivot from there.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments from Commissioners? Seeing none, thank you very much. Are there any committees or unfinished business reports?
No.
Seeing none, I will move us to the new business, which is the Arvada Housing Authority Choice Voucher. Well, that is the budget update, so we've got that. Then I will adjourn us. Thank you very much, Ms. Espinoza. So I will close the Housing Authority business updates, and I will open the Arvada City Council Meeting for October 7th, 2025. Prior to us moving into routine business, I just want to take a quick moment to acknowledge an event that we had. So many folks in this room knew Joe Hanksler, and if you didn't know him by name, you knew everything he did for us. Joe was the Executive Director of the Old Town Business Improvement District. He was a really special person and a friend to everyone he met, including myself. He passed away from cancer last week. And so I just want to take a moment to honor him and how special his contributions are to our city, because if you love Old Town, he did that. He was a huge part of making that magic real for all of us. And so he was, he was a younger man with a young family, and so I just want to ask that we all take a moment to recognize a really special Arvada and that loss. With that, Councilmember Pfeiffer, I will ask you to do the moment of, the pledge and the moment of reflection.
Turn me in a moment of reflection, please. And now for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Simpson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Rupert.
Here.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes for September 16th, 2025. Are there any additions or corrections to the record? Seeing none, those stand approved. We have four recognitions this evening, and I will turn it over to Councilmember Ambrose for the proclamation for National Manufacturing Month.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to invite AIDA staff members, along with their external partners, to come forth to the podium and mix it up a little bit by having you go ahead and give your remarks first, and then I will read the proclamation.
Thank you guys so much. We just wanted to recognize all of our manufacturers and all of our partners that support manufacturing in this city. As you all know, it's an important part of our workforce and our job creation for Arvada, and I will pass it off to our manufacturers, HR Manufacturing Extension Partnership.
Hello, Council. Thank you for having us. We are thrilled to be able to continue partnering with AIDA. I think we're in 13 or 14 years together on the Advanced Manufacturing Initiative, where we help small businesses grow and stay here in Arvada. And so Manufacturers Edge has been a huge part of that, and we're excited to continue that partnership.
We're putting one of our manufacturers on the spot.
Hi, my name is Alicia Svaldi, and I own Fauston Tools on the western side of Arvada. I have been in that building since 1999, and the city of Arvada has been great for us. They are very supportive of manufacturing. You know, anytime I had any issues or needed help, somebody was always there to lend a helping hand, and it's been great, and thank you very much for honoring us.
Thank you. Well, in honor of AIDA and all of our manufacturing partners in Arvada, I'm proud to read this proclamation. Whereas October is recognized as National Manufacturing Month, recognizing the importance of manufacturing innovation and providing jobs in high quality of life for our community; and whereas the manufacturing industry in Arvada supports a broad array of sectors, including aerospace, technology, food production, and renewable energy and advanced materials; and whereas Arvada is home to 100 manufacturing firms, which provide 2,841 highly skilled, well-paying jobs, which significantly contribute to Arvada's economic vitality; and whereas hosting manufacturers in Arvada contributes to the city's tax base and helps fund and sustain the community improvement projects that make our city a great place to live; and whereas during National Manufacturing Month, we celebrate the achievements of manufacturers in our city and honor their contributions. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and City of, City Council of the City of Arvada, Colorado, that the month of October 2025 be designated as National Manufacturing Month, and we encourage all Arvada community members to recognize the importance of manufacturing in our local economy and support our local manufacturers.
All right. Next, I will turn it to Councilmember Marriott for recognition of Archwell Health: The Snow Buddies Program.
The city's Snow Buddies Program works each winter to connect caring volunteers with neighbors who are physically unable to remove snow from their walkways. This year, Archwell Health opened a new clinic on 64th and Sheridan, and their team was eager to learn about our neighborhood programs. They graciously donated to cover the cost of the annual end-of-season Snow Buddies Ice Cream Social this past spring. Archwell Health also demonstrated, excuse me, also donated new snow shovels to send some of our volunteers into the upcoming winter with brand-new snow shovel. We at the city would like to thank Archwell Health for their generosity and commitment to supporting our Snow Buddies Program. And if you guys would come on up, appreciate that. I have a recognition to bring down to you, and it just says, "Archwell Health in recognition of their support for Arvada's Snow Buddies Program," and it's signed by all members of City Council.
Thank you. We're honored to be here.
If you'd like to say a few words, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are very honored to be, Archwell Health is very honored to be here in the community. We are serving, we are seniorly focused on senior care for the older generation, and we, we're just really excited to be a part of what the city is doing, and we are ready to participate with our time, with our financial resources, and just really excited to be here, serving the older community.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add to that. I'm sure that nobody else has a prop.[730.01][730.01](laughter) Thank you, thank you. Yes, as Claudio mentioned, we're really excited to be part of Arvada and helping with the community impact in the neighborhoods and the communities that we serve. We are determined to be a great community partner in helping the social determinants of the, of health, whether that be food resources, housing resources, and the like, and we look forward to partnering with you for years to come. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon, you're up for National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my distinct honor and privilege this evening to present the proclamation from the city of Arvada for National Hispanic Heritage Month, and we have Josef Lopez from Servicios de la Raza joining us this evening to accept the proclamations. If you'd please come up, and I will read it now. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated from September 15th through October 15th each year, the observation started in 1968, has Hispanic Heritage Week, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover the month at which it is celebrated today. We recognize that September 15th, or Quince de Septiembre, is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September 16th and 18th respectively. And whereas the city of Arvada looks forward to the greater community highlighting the rich heritage, arts, histories, food, music, and traditions of all 26-plus Latin American nations, while recognizing that these nations are not homogeneous, and this month celebrates, honors, and pays tribute to all for their contributions to our city and our society. And whereas Servicios de la Raza, once founded with the mission to provide and advocate culturally responsive, essential human services and opportunities to ensure support, reaches those who need it most. Servicios has served as a statewide leader and a provider of culturally responsive services since 1972, and has provided these services to thousands of residents in Jefferson County, including Arvada. And whereas the city of Arvada is committed to recognizing Latino, Hispanic, and Latinx culture and heritage as an important part of the city and its strong inclusive community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Arvada, Colorado, that September 15th to October 15th, 2025, be designated as National Hispanic Heritage Month and call its observance to all Arvada residents dated the 7th day of October 2025.
We would, we'd love to have you go ahead and say a few words, and then I know, or at least I believe I heard that we have a large group in the room, so once, after you've said a few words, I'd love to invite everyone who's here for this to come up here, and we'll do a photo with the, with the council and the dais.
Wonderful, thank you. I just want to say good evening, council members and Arvada folks. My name is Josef Lopez. I'm the Vice President of our Human Services Programs at Servicios de la Raza. Our President, CEO, and our other Vice Presidents were actually called to the Governor's Mansion for a different meeting that they had, but I am joined, however, by some of our staff, who you may have noticed in the room. And yeah, we're just super excited for this opportunity to be recognized like this. This is truly the type of thing that gives us the motivation to want to continue the work that we do. I did bring some information that I would like to share with y'all, which has our annual report, our business plan, and lists all of the vast services that we provide.
Wonderful.
So thank you again very much.
If you could give that to Ms. Rush, she'll make sure the council gets the information.
Absolutely. Thank you again.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
(inaudible)
Give everyone a second just to clear out. I believe this likely opened up a little bit of additional seating for other folks who were in the standing room. I invite you to also come down and help fill in.
Thank you. (inaudible)
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and let folks come in, grab a seat. I know we had quite a few folks stuck out in the hall, so I'm gonna give you just a second to come in. And there is no reserved seating, so don't be afraid of taking the front row. Best view in the house. There we go. I see, we do have a stroller, so I want to make sure we have a seat up in the corner for folks with the, you okay? Okay. There we go. All right, welcome, everybody. All right. The final proclamation we have today, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Davis for the proclamation for Disability Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone. Could I have our friends from the Arvada High School come to stand up here to accept your proclamation? It's great to see you all. Great. So whereas Disability Awareness Month, celebrated throughout the month of October, provides an opportunity to increase public understanding and celebrate the many achievements of people with disabilities and people who are not neurodivergent, I knew I was gonna mess that up. And whereas the city of Arvada recognizes that these individuals add great value to our community, demonstrate leadership, and are no longer defined by outdated notions of limitation, but instead celebrated for their strengths, perspectives, and contributions. And whereas Arvada High School has demonstrated leadership in fostering and strengthening a culture of accessibility and inclusion, while serving as an example of inclusion in action. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Arvada, Colorado, that the month of October 2025 be designated as Disability Awareness Month and call its observances to all Arvada residents dated the 7th day of October 2025.
We'll grab a quick photo, and then we'll have you guys make a few remarks. As you can see, we mix it up. We never know exactly what order we're gonna do it in.
Thank you for this opportunity to be here this evening. I'm Alex Uvari. I'm one of the social workers at Arvada High School. I work in special education and more specifically, the Effective Needs Program at Arvada.
And I'm Sarah Emilius. I'm one of the six special education teachers at Arvada High School. And at Arvada, we work really hard to support students with disabilities. This work is visible, and our professionals and staff who work to create a learning environment where every student can thrive. They don't just teach, they innovate, adapt, and champion the unique potential within each child. At Arvada High School, we partner with our families who advocate for their children and share their invaluable insights. We strive to ensure that every student that graduates from our school has the skills that they need to be successful in our society. This commitment to inclusivity and opportunity is at the very heart of Arvada High School's values. It reflects who we are, a community that cares, that shows up for one another, and that believes in the potential of every single student. We appreciate this honor to be here tonight and that you recognize the importance of serving students with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just, just real quick, I'm Audrey Smallcanyon. I am the Family Engagement Liaison at Arvada High School, and I just want to say thank you, and I just work with, for an incredible school, and sometimes Arvada gets a bad rap, but you just gotta come and check us out. Thank you.
Definitely do.
Arvada High's got a lot of spirit, and they're a great, great high school. All right. So with that, that is all of our proclamations for this evening's agenda. We have no presentations, so I'm going to take us into the consent, oh wait, public comment for items not scheduled on the agenda. So if you are here for a particular hearing, you know who you are, you will get to go but later during the hearing portion. This is public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening or that happen to be on the consent or resolution agenda this evening. We've got quite a few public comments signed up, so I'm just gonna take them in order, but I'm gonna go ahead and lay sort of the best practices for public comment that we ask that you follow. The first and foremost is to keep your, all your comments directed directly to us at the council. Please do not try to address anyone else in chambers or who may be watching at home. In addition, we always ask that you observe the decorum. You have three minutes. There is a second public comment at the end of the meeting tonight. That is five minutes. If you feel like you need more time, but this one's for three minutes. We also always ask that people, please don't react. Sometimes we want to applaud, sometimes we also want to boo. And so what we always ask is that you not react, simply so that this chamber remains a safe, welcoming space for everyone, regardless of what they are here to speak on, and that we hear you. So name and address when you approach the microphone, and at that, we will start with Stephanie Redding.
My name is Stephanie Redding. I am at 11350 West 71st Place here in Arvada, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Arvada Parks Advisory Committee, and I am here to, with the committee, strongly recommend prioritizing funding for an update to the city of Arvada's 2016 Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan in the 2025-26, 2026 Proposed Revised Biennial Operating and Capital Budget. I hope I got all of that correct. As you know, Arvada has long been recognized as a leader across the Front Range for its exceptional parks and open spaces, and now is the time to demonstrate that same forward-thinking commitment by ensuring that our guiding plan reflects the realities and opportunities of today. The 2016 Master Plan will reach its 10-year mark next year, and over the past seven months, the Arvada Parks Advisory Committee has reviewed one chapter of this older plan per month and discussed the ways that we think that it can and should be updated. What we've identified as part of that is that the master plan's outdated in both data and vision. Since 2016, Arvada's experienced change through population growth, shifting recreation preferences such as e-biking, new community priorities like water-wise landscaping, and increased maintenance needs. So continuing to rely on this decade-old plan, we feel really jeopardizes Arvada's standing as a, as a regional leader in outdoor recreation and will reduce our capability to receive outside funding for parks projects. Updating the Arvada Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan is an investment in our residents' quality of life and in our city's identity as a place that values health, nature, and community. A new plan will provide accurate, up-to-date data to guide decisions about land facilities and resources. It'll provide opportunities to identify potential land acquisitions, to chart the next generation of priorities, to ensure that Arvada remains responsive to the evolving wants and needs of our community, to align with ongoing planning efforts, to reinforce our commitment to outdoor access and recreation within Arvada, and to lead to a proactive rather than reactive approach to responding to our community's needs. So again, for those reasons, we strongly recommend the City Council fund an update to the Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan. It's not just the right time, but it is a really necessary next step to honor the city's achievements related to outdoor recreation and ensure a well-planned future. So again, thank you for your leadership and commitment to keeping Arvada a community celebrated for its parks, trails, and open spaces.
Thank you very much. I will also quickly note, usually we have our timer up here. There is a malfunctioning in the timer system, first time in my six years up here seeing this, so with apologies to everyone, I will start timing on my phone, and I will, if, if it's okay, I will hold up like, I'll hold up this hand when you have like a 30-second warning. That way you can kind of keep the time too and know where you are. So next, we have Nicholas Miller. And your time begins when you start speaking. I don't, I don't make your walk time part of it.
Good evening. Nicholas Miller, 13851 West 66th Way. My colleague Carol and I visited you, visited you guys a little while back, a few weeks ago, talking about the genocide of the Palestinian people and its connection to the city of Arvada. I don't really have much to say, except that I am providing to each of you a list of 16 investments that the city of Arvada holds that are connected to this. I think that most government workers don't really know those connections, so having that explained is very helpful, rather than just talking about it each time. And I think that it is morally correct for, or for us to distance ourselves from this event, and also politically wise to get that distance as well, considering the changing opinions throughout the world. So I'll, I have seven folders, one for each of you.
Perfect, thank you. If you'll give them to Ms. Rush, she'll make sure we all get them. Thank you very much. Next, we have Carol Napier.
My name is Carol Napier. I live at 11231 West 54th Avenue. During the last City Council meeting, I talked about how Arvadans' taxpayer money had been used to help kill and maim 200,000 Palestinians. had been used to help kill and maim 200,000 Palestinians. I told the council that that was a number that was agreed upon by an ex-Israeli defense chief. $7 million of Arvadaan taxpayer money was sent by the federal government to Israel to kill, maim, and starve Palestinian children. Today, I want to talk about another way Arvadaans are complicit, not willingly perhaps, but complicit nonetheless in the killing, maiming, and starvation of Palestinian children. I filed a request under the Colorado Open Records Act. Through that, I learned that the city of Arvada invests in 16 companies that help Israel violate the human rights of Palestinians. 16 companies. I want to highlight two of those corporations today. And in the folder that Nicholas provided you, you can find the other 14 companies. BlackRock, the city of Arvada invests in BlackRock. BlackRock is a financial institution that invests heavily in weapons manufacturers such as Lockheed Martin. Lockheed Martin has supplied Israel with F-16 and F-35 fighter jets, which have been used to kill and maim Palestinian children. BlackRock has investments in Northwick Grumman, a company that supplies components for missile systems and fighter jets to Israel. BlackRock owns shares in Elbit Systems, an Israeli defense company that provides military drones and surveillance technology to the Israeli military. I'm sure most of you have read the stories about the doctors who are caring for the children in Palestine and the eyewitnesses that say the children are playing or they're out in the streets and a drone comes above them and then shoots them and shoots munitions into their bodies. The second corporation is Alphabet, the parent company of Google, applies computing services and other technologies to Israeli military. I want to ask you, what are you going to do as the Arvada City Council to ensure that you are no longer, and I say no longer, complicit in the killing, starving, and maiming of Palestinian children? You need to look at your investments. I'm sure as Arvadaans, we do not want our money invested in corporations that are violating the human rights of the Palestinian people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelly Ergle.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Ergle. I live in the 5600 block of Allison Street, just up the road in Old Town, Arvada, also Reno Park. I have been an actively engaged resident of Old Town for nearly 25 years. But just one week ago, I became aware of the proposal, which is R25087, a resolution approving administrative rules governing the designated drinking areas in Old Town, Arvada. So I just became aware of this one week ago, and I am actively involved. I reached out to Councilmember Marriott, and thank you for engaging with me in electronic communication about this concern. I also thank you for sharing with me that your role is to be the liaison to the Business Improvement District Board, who is making this proposal. I shared concerns with Councilmember Marriott, and I'm sharing them with you now as I actually had the opportunity to also earlier share with the president of the Business Improvement District. My concern is that I am not understanding why we need to have 14 hours of unmonitored walking in the streets of Old Town, Arvada, seven days a week, drinking. I also am not seeing any plans for security, which is very different from our fantastically wonderful festivals that we have. I am seeing no clear gain or benefit for the community. I understand that the purpose is to advance the strategy for a more vibrant Old Town, but I cannot find an answer as to how exactly does having people walking around and drinking 14 hours a day, seven days a week, do this? Further, I have not seen any reason, any benefits, that outweigh potential risks to our neighborhood and to the schoolchildren who are just a few blocks away. The citations of this happening in other cities are cities that do not have single-family residents and elementary schools. There was also an example of COVID times. I personally don't see how that's connected, as COVID was five and a half years ago, when people were afraid to be out and afraid to be indoors. Very different. So I implore you, I am curious where the process was to include neighborhood voice and co-creation, as there has been with other projects in Old Town. And I am imploring you, city council, you Councilmember Marriott, as the link to all of this, and the Business Improvement District Board, to pause this and engage those of us who are residents in this wonderful place of Old Town, Arvada, in co-creating a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ed Tomlinson.
Good evening. I'm here tonight because Arvada has over 1,400 outstanding arrest warrants. That's 1,400. With real consequences, this behavior often escalates into something more serious, sometimes even sinister. Some people say a $2,000 misdemeanor offense is minor, but it's not. It's the smashed car windows from a break-in, the stolen laptop, tools for work. It's the package stolen from your front porch, it's your daughter's bike on the driveway. It is also the speeding vehicles and drunk drivers putting your children at risk. You can fix this. One, fully fund and add to the municipal court budget to clear the warrants backlog in the first four months of 2026. Two, send a last-chance postcard to those 1,400 encouraging these people to appear voluntarily. That should cut the warrants by the hundreds, maybe even five or six or 700. After the postcard warning deadline, post the names weekly in the Arvada press for those with two or more warrants. Some have as many as 14. For repeat offenders with two or more warrants, instruct the court to rewrite them as no bond warrants. So if they are stopped again, they spend the night in jail until court opens. And that single night can be a powerful deterrent for future crime. Post court stats in your Arvada report. And lastly, fund 15 additional police officers by raising salaries by 10%. It is needed to bring staffing up to standard so that we can retain officers and compete with Aurora. Thank you for your time. But if you don't do this, what does it say about us or you? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Len Clemens.
Good evening. I'm Len Clemens, 6202 Kilmer Loop, Arvada 80403, and I'm president of the Westwood Villas HOA. I'm coming for you with two concerns today. Since fall of 2021, I have interacted with Arvada traffic about the traffic at my community's intersection of McIntyre Street and West 63rd Avenue. At first, the city was considering an upgraded pedestrian crossing signal. But once the Amira Senior Residence was planned, the city changed to a full traffic signal. This was in early 2024. Since then, I understand the city has almost completed the design for the traffic signal. I was under the impression that the timing to start the traffic signal was going to be fall of 2025. But as it turns out, in recent information from staff, is a delay to summer 2026, and I quote, "due to staff resources and budget identification." I'm asking that the city council keep the traffic signal project on track for completion as soon as possible, due to the issue of the 5950 McIntyre Street industrial development timeline. This project, if approved by Jeffco, will entail more and more dump trucks to go up and down McIntyre due to the 30-foot grading of the site needed to level the property for proper building of the buildings. Numerous trucks going north from the property will make it nearly impossible for east-west residents to enter and exit from West 63rd Avenue. Not to mention, McIntyre Neighbors United Commission Traffic Opinion counters the developers' traffic count of 927 trips and says the number should be more than 3,200 trips a day once this property is built out. Delaying the traffic signal until summer could endanger many of the seniors living in my community and in the Amira Senior Residence. Also, a young child and her nanny were hit at the intersection a few months ago. My second ask is for a mobile traffic speed detector to be placed going north on McIntyre between 62nd Avenue and West 63rd Avenue to demonstrate how many speeders are going down the hill and around a blind curve to West 63rd Avenue on the east. Please consider elevating the full traffic signal at West 63rd Avenue and McIntyre to an earlier completion and adding the mobile traffic speed detector, both of these, as soon as possible. Thank you for considering my request.
Thank you. Next, we have Ted Smith.
Hello. Ted Smith, 9269 Garnett Street, Arvada, Colorado. And I came here today wanting to discuss our inspections department. I'm a neighbor in the Candellas neighborhood. And the idea that they have come twice now to tear out our front yards, put sewage lines across 72, promised us six-week turnaround times, both times. We are now at four months on the second crack at it. When I see inspectors, I never see them actually get in the ditch. Nobody on the crew that they hired owns a level. And the problem with this thing is the sewage line has sacked. Now the inspectors are not making them put in the materials that we were told last time around, two years ago, had to be upgraded to take the shock of 72 being on top of it. Further, I would also like to bring up that the inspection department dropped on us in Candellas. 13 non-approved ADA, so it was very convenient that today was ADA support day. Mailboxes. So now we have to absorb the cost of what your inspectors did not make the builders do. And this happened at Layden Rock and Five Points as well. Our inspection department is either A, incompetent, or B, undermanned. I don't know which, but it's not fair that I have to have my yard tore out again and again. And it's cost me $80,000 in property value this year. My house taxed at $515,000 in the letter I got from you on February. The last house that just sold in my area went for $405,000. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Denzel Powell. Oh, look, is our timer working?
Yes, it is.
Excellent. Ms. Kiriwa, I will turn the timing over to you. Thank you very much.
Hello, council. I am Denzel Powell from Candellas subdivision. My address is 19650 West 92nd Drive. And I'm actually here along with Ted, but I'm actually the resident that lives right there where all this work is happening. And so what they did was they never let us know that there was going to be any problem there. And so in front of my property is natural grasses. And right there, well, going all the way down through there is all the utilities. I had no idea that was going on. One day, they dropped a big, huge track loader there. Left it there for like a week or so, had no idea. It's just like right in front of my house. I could actually just like spit at it if I wanted to. It was that close. It was there forever. I found out that they're doing a big water line, the services all the way across the street, and the sewer all the way across the street, 72, to the Candellas warehouses that were approved. Well, this started about two and a half years ago. They had a problem with it when they first started with that contractor. That contractor went bankrupt. Took them like four or five weeks to find another contractor to come in, which was all tore up. The roads were a mess, the highway was a mess, everything was a mess. They finally got that done. Two and a half years later, I see all these people out there having a meeting. I walk out and I go, hey, what's going on out here? Come to find out, they said, yeah, we got to tear all this back up again. It wasn't done right. This was like two and a half, three months ago. Now they're saying, well, it's way worse. When you talk to public works, they say, well, it's way worse than we thought. That's all that we can get from them. Meanwhile, it's all tore up. No sign of whenever it's going to get done. We haven't even seen the contractors there. They were there one day in 13 days. The time before that, they dug across the road. They didn't put like any steel across the road for the cars to hit. We had that big rainstorm, what, a couple of weeks ago? Cars were going through there. Me and my wife actually went through there because we had to go to the hospital. It was raining so hard, we couldn't even see the ditch. We hit that ditch, popped out of that. I made it through, but other cars that went through there, their tires were blown out and all kinds of stuff. There's just no urgency to get anything done out there. I was just letting you guys know. We appreciate the help out there.
Thank you very much. Those are all the signups that I have for the open public comment period. Is there anyone in chambers at this time who would like to speak on any item not on the hearing agenda? Please come down. Name and address for the public record, Mr. Spears.
My name is Scott Spears, 16032 West 74th Avenue. I'm here tonight to speak on the designated drinking zone as well. I am in support of it. I own two restaurants in Old Town as well as three retail stores, two of which that are focused on children. I just want to remind council that you guys have approved the entertainment district years ago, which was basically this. The reason that the alcoholic part did not come is that it was really hard. State liquor laws are dumb, for lack of better terms. They required us to have two separate zones. You had to have different boards that ran each zone. You had to have different cups. And only the people in the zone could sell alcohol to be consumed in the zone. When we found about the designated drinking zone that Denver was doing and the way that we're trying to do this now, it includes everyone in the Business Improvement District can sell alcohol. So that's really the biggest, the most inclusive thing. This is really the only way we could figure out how to do it, and we think it's great. And to be totally honest, I know we did try this in 2020. There weren't any real issues. This has also been happening throughout this entire summer. People come in, they can buy to-go drinks to take home. Many of these people are just buying a to-go drink and walking around the street. So our businesses can sell to-go drinks legally, but a lot of the public are just walking around being illegal. So this will help most of the public become legal. And I guess the last thing is, we're not trying to make this a big giant party. We're just trying to keep people in Old Town. We're trying to advertise that you can come and enjoy Old Town, walk around, shop. Honestly, people spend a little bit more money when they have a couple cocktails in them, which is great for retail stores, but we're just trying to get them to stay. So thank you, Ed.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will... Oh, we got one? Come on down, please. Welcome, Ms. Paul. Name and address.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Paul, 10736 West 7th Avenue. I'm here to speak in favor of the Old Town, Arvada Designated Drinking Zone that is on the consent agenda by creating the designated drinking zone where visitors can responsibly, keyword responsibly, enjoy beverages while exploring Old Town. This initiative would enhance Old Town's already vibrant atmosphere and encourage people to stay longer and visit more businesses and enjoy... people to stay longer and visit more businesses and enjoy all of our district. It is not local a win for our local economy, but is a local, powerful, and strengthens the Old Town reputation. That is all I have.
Thank you. Any others in chambers who'd like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing, and I will open up our consent agenda. We have seven items on this evening's consent agenda, so bear with me as I open all seven. We have R-25-084, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the City of Arvada and the city and county of Broomfield for laboratory water analysis services in an amount not to exceed $25,000 a year. R-25-085, a resolution authorizing amendment number one to a construction management general contractor agreement by and between the City of Arvada and BT Construction, Inc., for the 2021 Waterline Improvements Project to award Phase II general contractor services in an amount not to exceed $928,296.82, thereby increasing the total contract amount to an amount not to exceed $956,996.82. R-25-087, a resolution approving administrative rules governing the designated drinking areas of Old Town Arvada. R-25-088, a resolution repealing the programming and use of Arvada's government access cable channel policy. R-25-089, a resolution granting non-exclusive public utility easement to the Public Service Company of Colorado, Excel Energy, to construct, operate, maintain, repair, and replace utility lines at Indiana Shops. R-25-090, a resolution granting a non-exclusive public utility easement to the Public Service Company of Colorado, Excel Energy, to construct, operate, maintain, repair, and replace utility lines at the Parks and Vehicle Maintenance Facility. And finally, R-25-091, a resolution granting non-exclusive public utility easements to the Public Service Company of Colorado, Excel Energy, to construct, operate, maintain, repair, and replace utility lines at Arvada City Hall. Councilmember Marriott.
Yeah, I'm going to ask for us to remove item number three, which is Resolution 25-087 and be heard separately.
Absolutely. So I will remove R-25-087, a resolution approving administrative rules governing the designated drinking areas of Old Town from the consent agenda. Council, you will be voting on R-25-084, 085, 088, 089, 090, and 091. Oh, we do need a motion. Councilmember Pfeiffer? Anybody? I'm sorry, it looked like you had your finger on your button.
I was going to vote too, but there's no motion. So I move to the consent agenda. R-25-84, 85, 88, 89, 90, 91. Yeah.
Yep.
Is that okay?
That is, that looks right. Thank you. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. And I will go ahead and now open R-25-087, a resolution approving administrative rules governing the designated drinking areas in Old Town Arvada. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Councilmember Marriott.
Yeah, thank you. I want to speak on this. I don't have a question, but I do want to make a comment. So I appreciate my neighbor Kelly coming out and speaking to me ahead of time about this and having interest in this, as well as others who have commented on it in both ways. I want to note that this has been underway for now a couple of years. We passed the enabling legislation, I believe, I don't know, more than a year ago, and it's been a very difficult process for both the business improvement district, but the businesses in Old Town as well as residents and visitors of Old Town to get to this point. I think the, the, the part about this that I think is, a couple of points about it that I think are important. The bid has gone out of its way to be as inclusive as possible with this whole conversation from beginning to end, also with as inclusive as possible with the way to implement this, given that all the businesses in Old Town, whether you're in the very limited open container zone or not, can still participate. I want to assure the residents that the whole Old Town area is not open for open consumption, but only the closed portions of Old Wadsworth and Grandview Streets are. And again, as was mentioned before, I would disagree with, again, my neighbor on this. We had a very good test of this for several years over, during COVID times. Granted, things are different now than then, but I think it was, at the very least, extremely compelling evidence that this is A, not a problem, and B, an enhancement for some people who would like to come to Old Town Arvada, particularly in the nice weather summertime area, and enjoy, whether it be the town square or a stroll up and down the street in front of our retail areas. So I'm not sure who wants to make a motion about this, but when a motion's made, I will be voting yes on this motion.
Councilmember Davis.
I would like to reserve the motion.
It is reserved.
And also make a comment after.
All right. Councilmember Mormon, you have a question?
I do. A comment that Councilmember Marriott said I asked for clarification on. So the, if I heard correctly, businesses outside of the closed portion can participate? So they can serve beverages, but they have to be consumed in the closed portion? Is that accurate?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Mormon. Yes, so businesses within the entertainment district, if they have a state takeout license, which they already are able to get through the state, can serve a takeout beverage to a person who can take it while closed to one of the designation, designated drinking areas and consume it once they're within that area. They would not be able to consume it outside of the designated drinking areas.
And how will customers know where the designated drinking areas are?
It's a great question. So currently, the plan is both to have signs at all entry and exit points indicating you're entering the zone and then to dispose of your alcohol upon exit, as well as all drinks that are to be consumed there will be, they'll have a QR code that will be attached as a sticker on each takeout drink, and when you scan the QR code, it will link you to the rules, the map that shows you where the designated drinking area is. And so that way, each member of the public can pull that up on their phone, see where it is, see what the rules are, and then, as well as law enforcement being able to identify that it's a proper takeout beverage from that sticker being on the drink.
And can we encourage businesses that are participating to have signs in their businesses to inform customers that that's what is happening, that they're getting a drink and that they have to take it to the designated drinking area? Because, see, I don't know if that communication is going to be delivered verbally from the restaurant to the customer, or, you know, there's no guarantee that that gets communicated. And, I mean, a QR code is a QR code, and I see that on a lot of things. It doesn't mean I'm automatically going to use it right when I receive it. So I'm curious about what other forms of communication can be used to inform the customer of where they need to consume the beverage.
So besides the signage and the QR code sticker, currently, the rules don't require specific signage to sell a designated drinking area, zone, takeout beverage. But the nice way about these rules and the way they're written is that they are under the purview of the city manager, and so if changes need to be made, Mr. Wick is able to amend the rules, completely revoke the rules if things go off the rails fairly easily just by issuing a new set of rules. And then the QR code in that landing page can also be updated very quickly. The bid is working, I know, on a rollout process and messaging as well, so I think there's going to be a good amount of communication about it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Yes, I also have a few questions. So these drinks, currently, if they're to-go drinks, it's for you to take home and consume? And how big is the problem of people consuming it in places they shouldn't be right now?
I don't know that. We have like specific numbers about that. We did meet with the police department about their input for these rules, and from their, from the reports I received from them, there was not a huge issue in contacting people with open container.
Okay. And my next question is, like, will these, because the way I read it is that these are still just going to be to-go drinks, so you could have it at home or in a designated area? Is that right?
Yes. For the designated drinking area, they would have to have that QR code, whereas the takeout beverage is just done through the state, and so it requires a separate type of labeling and sealing.
So is it the same, would this be the same labeling or the same drink category, or it'd be two different drinks, like this one you can take home, this one you can have? Or is that like still to be detailed, figured out?
Thank you for the question. No, it would be the same drink. It's just the state requires if you're going to take it home, and it's not in an already sealed container like a wine bottle or like one of those aluminum beer cans. It's like, you can tell it's sealed by looking at it. So if you're selling a drink that is a cocktail and it's in a plastic cup with a lid, it has to have this tamper seal tape on top of it, and then it has to have a label that informs the public, it's issued through, I believe, DOLA or DORA, that says you need to consume this at home. And so you could take that drink into a designated drinking area, and they would just have to slap that additional QR code to the same cup.
Okay. And then my next question is about the fees. Are the to-go drinks already charged differently, or is there already a fee that businesses pay to sell these back to the city of Arvada?
In order to get a takeout permit, I think it's $11 with the state. Might be 14, but it's a fairly inexpensive fee to get a takeout permit.
Okay. And are we planning on charging a fee to, for, on these drinks to be able to, because I saw that there's plans to have, especially probably when it's first rolled out, increased enforcement to make sure that people are using the drinks appropriately and they're not just going to the liquor store and having a good time, but they are, you know, patronizing our businesses that we want them to do that. So is there a fee, so will there be a fee associated with these drinks to help enforce this program?
There's not currently a fee assessed against the businesses, no.
Okay. And will there be a plan to do this, or is there a need, or is it going to cost the city for enforcing this more than what the current enforcement is?
I think the city is paying for the cost of the signage. I believe that's less than $300 is my understanding from the quote from our sign people. But other than that, we are staying with our current maintenance schedule and things along those lines. But like I said, because these are administrative rules, our city manager does have the ability to amend them if the city is incurring a lot of costs as a result of this program, and we can be flexible to amend the rules.
Okay. So it's kind of like a wait and see, like, you know, if there isn't any problem, don't fix it, right? Like, go ahead and roll out and see if there needs to be an enforcement if people are getting confused or there's a lot of outside drinks being brought in, but we don't really need to start off with fees. It sounds like the businesses are going to be responsible for informing and making the program successful?
Yes, the bid has agreed to do the landing page with the rules and the map, as well as give QR codes to all the eligible businesses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I just wanted to ask a quick clarifying question. I believe I know the answer, but I just want to constantly try and clarify more and more. Because this is specifically to-go drinks prepared by a restaurant and put into a plastic cup, you can't go into a shop and purchase a closed bottle, like closed wine or closed cocktail in a can or something like that, and just take that out, correct? It needs to be designated with that, with that QR code.
It needs to have the QR code designation, and it cannot come from a retail alcohol store. It has to come from a different type of alcohol license, whether that be a hotel, restaurant, or bar, or tasting room, are the various ones we have in Old Town. So they could sell like a can of beer, but it would have to have, it would have to come from a restaurant and would have to have the QR code. You wouldn't be able to just go to any liquor store or bring your own alcohol from home.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's what I was going for. Councilmember Davis, all yours.
Thank you, and thank you for these answers to our inquiries, Counselor. So having been part of the Old Town experience through one of my service groups, I have noticed that they're really, people have been very, very respectful of the drinking areas in Old Town Arvada. And what's really interesting, I'm sorry, I should get closer, and what's really interesting is that it is kind of surprising when I see somebody walking with a can of beer, but it has a sticker on it. So I know that our residents and visitors are paying attention and are respectful of what's going on. I have seen some to-go items come from some of the folks that may be outside of our area of the designated drinking area, but people are very respectful and they wait until they get to the designated drinking areas. I've also taken note of purveyors that say, sorry, no, you can't take this outside of our area, no alcohol passed here, and here's why. And a lot of it is fear of losing their liquor licenses and not having that available since that is maybe their number one draw to their, to their establishment. So I also see here that in section 2.6, compliance with state and local laws, that the city manager is given wide berth in, in regulating and enforcing the local laws. So this is an encouragement for local businesses to discourage people from being outside of the drinking areas. I can see where this would be very, very much, it would be very good for our Old Town businesses, and it's really kind of nice to see somebody walking through some of the businesses that don't sell alcohol and seeing folks taking a look at things and actually making purchases because they can linger and they don't have to just sit at the bar and drink their drink. They can actually go to some of our folks that sell other, other items, retail items. So I do see this as, as a pilot, but I think it, I've seen it in the, in downtown Denver in the Milk District, that it's been very successful, and they haven't seen an, an over-serving of folks. As a matter of fact, people are better regulated. I've also noted that we see staff at the ends of each of the drinking areas. Also, I always see our officers walking around, smiling, shaking hands, being noticed so that people don't step outside of the, of the rules. And the Rangers are wonderful ambassadors for this program. They see something going on, they put a stop to it pretty quickly. So just having, being down there with my Kiwanis group, I can say that it's, it's, it's been a very popular and successful summertime endeavor, so I'm really looking forward to seeing how this pans out into the future. Thank you, Ms. Justice.
All right. With that, I will accept the motion. There are no more lights.
I move that R-25-087, a resolution approving administrative rules governing the designated drinking areas in Old Town Arvada be approved.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon, you wish to speak?
Yes, I do. I will be supporting this today, but I do request that, given the discretion that's left to our city manager, that we get a regular report on the progress of how this is going and what concerns and issues do come up and how we can address those and keep things moving smoothly and going in the direction we want to see. So that would be my one request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bless you to the audience member that sneezed. And with that, that passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. And I echo the sentiments of regular updates to make sure that this is performing as it's supposed to be. All right, we have one resolution this evening. It is R-25-092, a resolution approving the submission of the First Substantial Amendment to the 2024 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Program to Reprogram Allocated CDBG Funds. Ms. Espinoza, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Arvada is required to complete a five-year consolidated plan as part of the federal community development block grant requirements. This five-year plan establishes a unified and strategic vision for economic development, housing, and community development actions. The five-year plan is carried out through annual action plans, which provide a concise summary of the actions and activities that will be used each year to meet the five-year goals. As projects and priorities shift over that five-year plan period, the city can amend an annual action plan to reprogram funds to other projects. The city's Essential Home Repair Program, a program that offers home repair services to income-qualified homeowners, has a healthy, healthy reserve of funding to allow the city to consider funding an additional project. The Housing Division recommends reprogramming CDBG budget from $480,000 from the Essential Home Repairs Program to support the rehabilitation of Beyond Homes Rehabilitation Project. Beyond Home provides critical housing and case management services to homeless families and is rehabbing 22 of its existing units to provide critical updates, including new HVAC, flooring, appliances, insulation, lighting, cabinetry, and plumbing fixtures. The reprogramming of these funds will not affect the service levels offered to the Essential Home Repairs Program. to the Essential Home Repairs Program. The Housing Team recommends approval of a substantial amendment to the 2024 CDBG Annual Action Plan, which will enable the city to support the Beyond Home project. And I do have Karen Allen with me tonight, the executive director of Beyond Home, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Rupert?
You indicated this change is enabled because there are reserves built up of unused funds. And I'm curious, at what rate are the Essential Home Repair Funds not getting used? What's the buildup over time?
That's a great question. Thank you for asking that. So prior to 2022, the Essential Home Repairs Program offered loans to homeowners for these repairs. And as homeowners refinance their homes or sold their homes, that loan was required to be repaid. And over time, especially during COVID, we saw a significant amount of refinancing happening. And so we built up the fund reserve there to where we don't actually need our annual entitlement from HUD to pay for the Essential Home Repairs Program. We can rely on that revolving loan to continue that program through 2026.
So we don't need additional CDBG funding to keep that part of the program going? It's rejuvenating itself?
It is. Now, oh, I'm sorry.
And so then the new money is coming to fund this extension of the program?
Right. It'll go to fund the new project.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
Are there any other questions?
Nope.
If not, I'll make the motion.
All yours.
I move that R25-092, a resolution approving the first substantial amendment to the 2024 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant program to reprogram allocated CDBG funds be approved.
All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Appreciate you. All right. Next, we have first reading. I will quickly note that the final item on the first reading agenda, which was CB25-026, has been pulled from first reading simply so that the staff can tweak it a little bit, and that'll be coming back in the future. With that, Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. I move CB25-021, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 102, utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to water users' rates and bi-monthly service charges. And CB25-022, an ordinance amending Section 102-206 of Chapter 102, utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to wastewater users' rates and bi-monthly service charges. And Section 102-355 of Chapter 102, utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to stormwater user rates. And CB25-023, an ordinance prohibiting the installation of gray water treatment works and the use of gray water within the city of Arvada. And CB25-024, an ordinance appropriating funds for fiscal year 2026. And finally, CB25-025, an ordinance certifying the city of Arvada mill levy for 2025 for the Board of County Commissioners for Jefferson and Adams Counties be approved on first reading, order published in full, and a public hearing dates be set for October 21, 2025 at 6:15 p.m.
All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. All right. The next item on the agenda is what is the main event this evening. Now, usually I try to call a break around 8:00 p.m. because that's at the two-hour mark right now, but it is already almost 7:20 and that would essentially effectively kind of subdivide our hearing. And I don't want to do that. So I'm going to call a short break, about five minutes. Stretch your legs, go to the bathroom, get some water. We'll reconvene right back here. That way we can all go and we can, we're going to stick with you guys all the way through. So five-minute break and we'll be back soon. Welcome back, everybody. Council spent five minutes getting its sugar fix on, so I feel like we're ready to go. We all have our candy. So with that, how this process is going to work is I'm going to have the team open our public hearings, then we're going to do a swearing-in for everybody who would like to speak on this item, including the applicant. We'll have a presentation and then public comment. You will again have three minutes to weigh in. I also want to quickly note that we have received numerous emails on this issue. We have been given all of them and we've had the opportunity to review them. So as you can see, I've kind of the for and the against over here. So I just wanted to make that note for the record that if you weren't able to be here tonight, or if you sent something in in written record, we did receive it and we did have the opportunity to look at that. So with that, I'm going to open, Ms. Morris, do you want me to open one at a time or have all of it go and then we'll hold the votes separately?
You can open them all at the same time since all the facts will be relevant to all three, and then you'll just vote separately at the end.
Okay. And with that, I will open our hearing items this evening. So first, we have the major comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning for Allendale Elementary School, 9.66 acres of parcel land generally located at 5900 Oak Street. Mr. Smetana, do you want me to read the two hearing items quickly? Okay. So first is R25-093, a resolution by the city of, Arvada City Council for the city of Arvada, Colorado, to amend the 2014 Arvada Comprehensive Plan land use designation pertaining to the former Allendale Elementary School from the city of Arvada, public, quasi-public to the city of Arvada Suburban Residential, a parcel of land located at 5900 Oak Street, as well as CB25-020, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada, the former Allendale Elementary School from city of Arvada RN-7.5, which stands for residential neighborhood, to city of Arvada R-6 Residential 6, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, 5900 Oak Street, ordinance number 4906. Mr. Smetana, before you get started, Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. As a part of council's commitment to transparency, I want to disclose that I met with Cardell Homes prior to this application being filed with the city. This discussion that I had with Cardell was very general. No details were discussed and I did not present any position or provide information to Cardell during that discussion.
Thank you very much. And I will also acknowledge to everyone that council takes its responsibility very, very seriously in deciding land use matters. As such, each member of the council has taken time to appropriately prepare for this matter, not only including our packet. And in some cases, we visited the site to acquaint ourselves with the physical layout of the land and the neighborhood so that we could see it in person. No testimony was taken at these site visits. All written comments received by the council are included in the public packet. And just so you know, these site visits were hosted with professional staff, not with the developer, not with members of the neighborhood. And as we said, there was no sort of attempt to bias or sway. It was simply so that we could see the land and understand what all of you understand. So all members of council have committed to reserving their decision on this matter until all evidence and arguments have been presented at tonight's public hearing. And I will just share with all of you, as a quasi-judicial matter, our job is to act as judges on the issue at hand. So we cannot take in irrelevant information to the questions of the issue before us. And in particular, we have to base our decisions based off everything presented in tonight's hearing. So if there's been social media chat or anything like that, we exclude all of that from our decision-making process. So with that, Mr. Smetana.
Thank you. As you mentioned, the applicant is requesting approval of a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning for the former Allendale Elementary School site. The current zoning of the property is RN 7.5 and the request is to rezone to R6. Concurrently, the comprehensive plan amendment from quasi-public and public to suburban residential is requested in order to appropriately align with the rezoning request. The applicant is proposing to construct 57 single-family homes on the 9.66 acre site. The project would have a density of 5.9 dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with the R6 zoning that allows for up to six dwelling units per acre. If the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning are approved, a site plan and minor subdivision application will be reviewed under separate application. So we will look at more detail should you approve the two items tonight. Based upon the project analysis and review of the Land Development Code approval criteria, staff did recommend approval of the Allendale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, given the existing suburban residential land use designations that surround the site and the rezoning to R6, which would be allowed under the suburban residential land use designation. However, the Planning Commission during their August 6 meeting denied the comprehensive plan amendment request and recommended denial of the rezoning. The applicant has made some modifications to the plan since the Planning Commission meeting, and those will be described in their presentation tonight. A notice for the hearing was provided through publication in a local paper, mailed notice and signs posted on the property, and we have received the signed posting log and mailing affidavit and they are in order. In addition to the applicant, we do have several members of the city team from planning and engineering and legal here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. If you plan to speak on this item tonight, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes? Thank you. All right. At this time, I will invite the applicant to come up to make their presentation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Conway and I'm representing Cardell Denver Homes. The address, my address is 9110 East Nichols Avenue, that's Centennial, Colorado, 80112. I'd like to first start tonight by thanking the staff for all of your unwavering support and guidance throughout this process. We certainly appreciate everything that you've done for us. I would also like to thank the members of the community tonight. Cardell truly appreciates your dedication to the community. I would also like to thank, and first and foremost, is the Arvada City Council. Through all of these late-night hearings, you guys truly make Arvada the premier destination to live and work in Colorado. Over the past year, our team has worked tirelessly to present a plan that meets a lot of the requirements of the city as well of all, as well of the project stakeholders. With us tonight, I have myself from Cardell Homes, we have Travis Fraser from Redland, who is our civil engineer, we have Julie Gammick from THK and Associates, who is our planner and landscape architect, Cassie Slade is here from Fox Tuttle, who is our traffic engineer, and Jeff Keighley is here from JMC Consulting, who is our development consultant. Cardell Homes is a relatively small builder here on the Front Range. We have four primary operating locations. We have Denver, we have Tampa, we have Ottawa, and we also have Calgary, which is our home base. In Denver, we deliver approximately 100 single-family, both attached and detached, units per year. Oh, sorry. While we might not be the largest in size here on the Front Range, we do pride ourself in customer satisfaction and quality. And those are, those are core qualities to our company. Our company was founded by two school teachers, Carol and Dell Oakey, the Car, and the Dell in Cardell. And they built homes for the community in the Prairies of Canada. And ultimately, their attention to detail, cost, and quality laid the foundation for our business. Today, Cardell continues to remain a family-owned and operated organization, and we are committed to our communities. Each new community is thoughtfully designed. The houses in these communities are thoughtfully designed by our in-house architect, Richard Berkowitz, who has been with our organization for 25 years. Richard, pending approval, will come to Arvada and spend considerable amount of time here putting together a product that blends with the existing community. At Cardell, we do not build homes in large master-planned communities like those found in Aurora and up in the northern suburbs. We focus our efforts on quaint communities such as Deer Creek, which is out in Ken Carroll. We have Three Hills, which is also out in Ken Carroll. We have Vivant, which is out in Parker. And we also have Westminster Station, which is in Westminster. We, a core value of our organization is giving back to the community. So one thing we do look forward to is working with all of the Arvada community to designate a charity and we will, or we will grant a sizable contribution to help with the Arvada community. Throughout this process, we have maintained close contact with Jefferson County Schools. We understand that closing a community school is a very difficult process and we appreciate that Jefferson County plays, or Jefferson County Schools plays an important part in their decision-making is not taken lightly. And their students are the foremost consideration when they do close a school. This Allendale Elementary School was offered to the city of Arvada for use or for purchase. And ultimately, Arvada did not have the planning for the utilization as a public, as a public use of the land. So Jefferson County Schools made this available to the private development community. Through a request for qualification and a request for proposal process, Cardell ultimately won the right to come in front of council and to the community and present our plan. You know, we look forward to presenting our plan to everybody tonight. And with that, I would like to introduce Julie Gammick from THK, who will give our technical presentation.
Good evening, council, and thank you for your time. I just want to start by giving a quick overview of the development process and where we are in that process. We are at the very first step of this process with the comp plan amendment and rezone. This has been long in coming with community input, discussions with staff. And our next step will hopefully be the site plan and minor subdivision plat, where some more technical details of the proposal, which I know has been of interest to the neighborhood, including open space activation, fencing types, specific architecture, et cetera, will be more fully detailed. From there, we'll have permitting, demolition and land development, and then home building, which ultimately we are expecting to take between one and three years. I want to speak a little bit about the community engagement that this project has gone through to date. So far, there have been two processes. One was held by the Jefferson County School District. That's highlighted in the blue on the top. Jefferson County had a community meeting. They had online comments. The package went out for prequalifications. Part of the review committee that reviewed the packages included community members. Ultimately, Jeffco is going to sell the property. In this last RFP process, three packages were selected for final review, all three of which proposed single-family development. Ultimately, Cardell was selected partially because of our story, partially because of our product, and partially because Jeffco felt we were the best partner for the project. From our standpoint, we have also gone through a fairly extensive community engagement. From our standpoint, we have also gone through a fairly extensive community engagement process. We initially started meeting with staff in December of 2023. We've held two neighborhood meetings, in each instance, over 750 mailers were sent to the community. Our first meeting had 68 people in attendance that signed the sign-in sheet, and our second meeting had 44 residents. Between those two community meetings, we made a revision to our site plan, which we'll show you tonight, so you can see the process which we went through and the input, and how we took that input and used it. We've been through the Planning Commission. Again, we received quite a bit of valuable input there and have made revisions to our site plan, which we'll discuss as well. And now here tonight, we're at City Council. So we have notified the residents of this project now three times, so 752 mailers each time. We've made multiple touchpoints, the signage, et cetera. So I just want to walk through the comprehensive plan amendment compliance criteria and how we feel that we are meeting those criteria. So for number one, existing plan needs the proposed amendment. So currently, the site is a public, quasi-public site. There is no determined use that is going to meet that land use designation. Jeffco will sell the site, Arvada is not able to take on the site at this point in time. So ultimately, this change in the land use designation will happen regardless. This adjustment is supported by the comp plan in the way that the community vision included in the comp plan provides a range of distinctive living environments from semi-rural to rural lifestyles, and the demographic trends noted in the comp plan that a wider range of housing, retail, and employment choices were desired within the community. The second compliance criteria includes compatibility with the surroundings and the plan goals. The surrounding neighborhood is suburban residential, and we are proposing that the comp plan land use be modified to be suburban residential, matching the land use surrounding it. This is a natural fit in the community. This also allows us for a mix of product types. One other thing I want to note is there are more dense land uses to our east, so that isn't unseen in the immediate area of the project. The compliance criteria, I'm sorry, compliance criteria number three discusses no major negative impacts to transportation services or facilities. We've put together a chart showing the traffic impacts of the 57 proposed homes with 511 daily average trips compared to Allendale at its enrollment in 2021, when it was closed at 552 daily trips. And then several civic uses, including Allendale at a full enrollment level, a recreation center, and a library, showing that those civic uses would by far exceed twice of what the daily average trips of the 57 proposed homes would be. We believe that the traffic patterns for single-family homes compared to single-family homes is much more compatible than a school or civic use is. In addition, we'll look to improve Oak Street to meet current criteria, upgrade ramps, and improve the sidewalk width. One of the other items we've heard is concern about parking. With our proposed product, we will provide a two-car garage in addition to two parking spaces in the driveway, providing 228 total off-street parking spaces in the neighborhood. These will also all be interior to the site, as none of our homes face Oak Street. Criteria number four is minimal effects on service provisions. All of the current services that are required for this site are in place and were utilized for the school, including water, sewer, trash, snow, and emergency services. Criteria number five is that the project does not need to be annexed. Number six is strict adherence would conflict with plan intent. As we have mentioned before, the school district has determined that they need to sell some of their assets, and this site went up to the public. Currently, the school district is spending approximately $150,000 annually maintaining the property as it stands. We feel that these funds can be reinvested back into the school district when this property has been sold. And in compliance with the comprehensive plan, this property is vacant and underused, and per goal L-5 infill in the city is desired. Criteria seven promotes public welfare and aligns with plan policy. This project will contribute to housing diversity and community reinvestment. It will revitalize the currently vacant school site. And our estimates, based on mill levy only, so that would exclude sales tax, is that this project will bring approximately $255,000 annually into the city's coffers. Plan policies for the comp plan that support this change include policy L2-1 promoting redevelopment, as well as a variety of housing choices, goal L-5 designating and promoting redevelopment and infill to generate economic revitalization, improve physical conditions, and provide an appropriate mix of quality housing choices, goal CC-1 different development characteristic districts, policy CC-1.1, a variety of development types, including higher-density housing, policy CC-1.2 context-sensitive design of new development, policy CC1.3 compatible infill encouraging new development to consider and be sensitive to the character of existing neighborhoods, including building scale, placement size, height transitions, landscape, streetscape, and other design measures, and finally, policy CC-1.4, working with the stakeholders to strive for integration. The second request tonight is for a rezoning from RN 7.5 to R6. We've had a lot of conversations with staff and with the neighbors about the differences between the two and what the value of each is. So we've provided a small chart here. Suburban residential is defined in the comp plan, shows that the primary uses in a suburban residential area is single-family residences. The characteristics and location appropriate in this location is new residential that has traffic access from local or collector streets. The density allowed is up to six dwelling units per acre, and the zoning districts include R6 Residential Sixth District and RN Residential Neighborhood District. So both the existing surrounding zoning and the proposed zoning of R6 are compatible and appropriate under this land use choice. Several things I want to note between the two, which are important, is with the RN 7.5, it is a larger lot size with a 7,500-square-foot lot size and 75-foot frontage, where an R6 is a smaller lot size at a minimum of 4,000 square feet and 40-foot frontage. Setbacks are slightly different but comparable. Side setbacks are again slightly different but comparable. Building coverages are comparable. The maximum height is different between the two zones, but we want to note that our proposed height from top of foundation to top of ridge line would be 28 feet, meaning that our product would be approved within either zone district. And one thing that we do feel that we are providing as an asset to the overall community is that we are providing the 20% open space that is required as part of R6 that is not required as part of RN 7.5. We understand that the R6 is a somewhat new zone district, but we have found a couple of areas within the city where this has been done before. It is not an unusual circumstance within the city. Two like projects are at Carr Street and West 67th Avenue, and at Wadsworth between West 74th and 76th Avenue. You can see here that these two parcels were incorporated into existing RN 7.5 neighborhoods. If this rezoning is approved, you will see that the R6 becomes, how that looks within the zoning map, surrounded by the R7.5 to our south, north, and west, and then RND and a variety of other zonings to our east. So to touch briefly on the rezoning compliance criteria, that the rezoning is consistent with a plan or changed conditions, so obviously, going from a school site to any other type of use is a fairly dramatic change. The current land use of public quasi-public will have to be updated for any development on this parcel, as the school will not reopen, and the city has determined that this cannot be used for a civic use. For criteria number two, it's consistent with the zone's intent. Again, we are not asking for a variance of any kind. We meet all of the requirements and criteria for RN 6, in addition to this being the zoning district recommended by staff. In the comp plan, Chapter 2 Discussion on Redevelopment and Infill, multiple items are discussed, including scale, size, and setbacks should be similar or comparable, transitions in building height may be appropriate, pedestrian-friendly design is encouraged, and usable parks, trails, and open space are encouraged. All of those things, we feel that we are meeting. The comp plan also talks fairly often about seniors having the ability to age in place and stay in their homes and longtime communities. We feel like this development offers folks that opportunity. A specific goal that this also meets is N-1.2, encouraging new neighborhoods to incorporate a mix of lot sizes, density, housing types, and styles. And while I recognize that that likely applied to a larger development than our 10 acres, we feel that we are bringing new development into an existing area, and we should be cognizant of that ultimate vision. Criteria number three discusses services that are available. All services required on the site for this new development are currently available. Compliance four is for minimal environmental impacts. We will provide an onsite detention pond for stormwater control. We are reducing the current impervious surface of the site by 6%, and a Phase 1 environmental was completed with no concerns. For rezoning compliance criteria five, compatibility with the neighborhood. The compatibility per the comp plan shall consider building scale, placement, size, height transitions. We feel like we are meeting all of those requirements or criteria. As it is a newer product in an older neighborhood, Cardell will work to design the architecture to resemble some of the surrounding homes. And again, R6 and RN 7.5 are both part of the suburban residential per the comp plan. Now I want to touch briefly on how our land, where our land plan started and how it's evolved, based on feedback from the neighborhood, from staff, and from Planning Commission. Our original land plans are here, shown on the screen. The original land plan is shown on the left. You can see here that several of the homes face Oak Street, and the open space was very internal to the proposed site. Following our first public meeting, we heard that it was desired that homes did not front onto Oak Street because of the amount of not only vehicular traffic, but pedestrian and bicycle traffic along that corridor, and that the neighborhood would like better and less restricted, is not quite the right word, but less circuitous access to the open space. So we reoriented our lots in the interior of the site to remove that faces to Oak Street and to provide a more welcoming open space to the rest of the community. Additionally, we've looked at some looped trails and are looking forward to working with staff and the community on how to best activate the open space with active and inclusive play features. I'm going to go back, sorry. The graphic on the right is what was shown to Planning Commission. So following our discussions with Planning Commission and some additional community input via Planning Commission comments at the time of the meeting and emails, we responded again to the feedback that we received. And post Planning Commission, some of the updates we made is we continued to push the density towards the interior of the site and make the lots on the northern boundary of the site wider, trying to better match the existing homes to our north. I would like to point out that the homes to the east side, well, it looks like it's kind of a two-to-one between the existing and the new homes, the bordering eastern homes are actually duplexes, so they are in fact two units per building. And we're providing a 30-foot buffer on the south to just provide a little bit of buffering for the existing. Other things I want to point out is that we are providing the 20% open space, it's a little bit more than one acre. This site, as the group knows, is very closely located to the Marge Roberts Park to the southeast, and Harold D. Lutz Sports Complex and Apex Fieldhouse to the south. And our intention along the open space is to provide open rail fencing to try and keep some of those view corridors open. Here are a couple of examples of Cardell elevations that they're using in surrounding communities. As has been mentioned a couple of times before, Cardell has an in-house architect, and we will work with staff and the community to refine the facade to complement the existing Our new plan gives us the ability to offer ranch-style homes that gives variety of home styles for buyers to choose from. So this may be of interest to people who are seniors, downsizing, folks aging in place, young families, working professionals, healthcare folks, et cetera. Again, I want to be clear that these are at max a two-story home with a 28-foot height from top of foundation to top of peak. For our drainage, all of the stormwater will be captured in an onsite detention pond. All of the stormwater will be treated for water quality and released at 90% of the pre-development rates. The historic outfall to the south to Van Bieber Creek will remain, and we are, again, we're reducing the impervious site by 6%. The internal road cross-sections will meet the city of Arvada Local Road Code, and all roads will be public with a five-foot sidewalk. In addition, we'll be making improvements to the east side of Oak Street to provide a wider sidewalk and improve the right-of-way width that currently does not meet standards. There were several neighborhood concerns voiced in our engagement efforts about local enrollment and impact of this project to local schools. In speaking with Jeffco in how they determine the new student population based on housing, for the 57 units proposed, Jeffco calculates .4 students per household, providing a total of 23 new students from this development. We heard from neighbors that they were concerned at the current enrollment rate of existing elementary, middle, and high schools, and you can see by this chart here that all three, the elementary, middle, and high school are well under current enrollment as full enrollment, and that our 23 students would not impact or put those enrollment numbers above and beyond what is approved from the Jeffco School District. We also feel that this redevelopment is really part of bringing more enrollment to the district, and having full enrollment adds value by putting students in classrooms, which ultimately provides more funding and services for those students. We did have a traffic study prepared and have submitted that to the city. The Scope Traffic Study meets local and national standards. The traffic counts are adequate and capture a typical day. Allendale enrollment from Jeffco School District is shown here in this chart, we've already gone over it briefly, and we've also shown the similar-sized schools, so, and our traffic engineer is in the audience if there are any questions from council. At our community meeting, there were, it was requested that a shade study was prepared for the homes on our northern boundary, and the consulting team did that and presented those to the public at our second public meeting. One of the other things we've heard-
Apologies. Could we go back a slide and look at that solar study?
Sure.
Thank you.
These model a 28-foot-tall foundation-to-peak home, and as you can see, on December 21st, between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM, or 4:00 PM, I'm sorry, which is the shortest day of the year, that our shade impacts are minor. This video has also been provided to staff, so you can actually see the translation of the sun, so that whole visual is available to council.
So for clarity, you're saying that the minimal impacts will occur basically this one day a year on the winter solstice?
Yep, pretty much.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. And again, the staff has that video if council wants to see that time progression. We've heard a lot of-
Can we just go back to that slide, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
This slide or the preceding?
This one. So what side of the development are we on? Are we on the north side?
So this would be the north, the yellow lots are the existing lots, and those are the lots that border us on our north side.
Okay, so this is just one day, but it takes us a minute to get there. My thoughts were-
Point of order, can we just get through with the-
Point of order, can we just get through with the point of order?
Yes, thank you. We'll come back.
So again, as we've heard quite a bit from the neighborhood, there has been a lot of conversation about why R6 versus why RN7.5. We wanted to provide a product comparison of what the market would accept on an R7.5 lot at that 7,500 square feet, which would put the average square foot of a home at 3,200 square foot plus with three to four garage spaces. The RN7.5 that exists within the surrounding neighborhood is an average of 1,700 square feet with one to two garage spaces. And in R6 zoning, we are proposing 2,000 to 2,400 square feet with two garage spaces, being much more compatible to what is the existing condition rather than what the market would bear at that larger lot size. I want to specifically note the images we've provided here. Again, the image on the left is the proposed 2,000 to 2,400 square foot unit. The one on the right would be more in keeping with what an RN7.5 lot size would have within the market. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Keighley to discuss some of the market conditions.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Keighley. I live in Greenwood Village. I want to step back a little bit and kind of get to where we're at today. You know, we went through the process with the school district. They chose us because they thought we would be a good partner with not only Arvada, but with Jeffco School District. The school district is spending about $150,000 per year to maintain this school site. So there's a need for them to sell the site. And under our contract, which is public knowledge, we will be paying the school district $62,500 per lot approved under the zoning. So it's an investment back into the school district. And that kind of plays into what our costs, what our costs are associated with building a single-family home. So under this cost breakdown, this is a per-unit cost breakdown. As you can see, the home cost is the biggest pie of this. You know, if we go to that RN7.5, the land development pie piece would be bigger. And we would have to eventually sell these homes for very much more significant value than under the R6. And we believe this is not very compatible within this neighborhood. We do believe R6 is the most compatible use and very similar product to our surrounding uses. And to get to the number that we presented earlier, and this is a full build-out scenario. If you take a $700,000 market value and you apply the mill levy across that value, you're generating about $4,500 per unit in our community. And on an annual basis, it's roughly $255,000. I do want to note this excludes permit fees as we go through, other use and sales taxes as we build out the community, and then future sales tax that our residents will spend in the city of Arvada. So this is a full build-out scenario. With that, I just want to thank you guys for your time, and we look forward to your questions.
Thank you. All right, with that, I'm going to open the public comment portion of this evening's agenda. I want to first note that we have six folks who have turned in sheets to acknowledge that they do not wish to speak, but they just wanted their opposition to this project. All are in opposition on the record, so I wanted to acknowledge that for those folks. Next, I'm just going to take you guys in order. And just as before, it's the same rules of order. So come forward three minutes. Please try to keep your comments directed at us. No applause, no booing. We want everyone to feel welcome in this space, however their position may be. And with that, just name and address when you come on up. Also, one thing I forgot to mention earlier, these are your opportunities to present to us. As you noticed earlier, we don't respond when there are questions. But if you elucidate something that we might be interested and you might see us ask that question during the conversation and questions process of the hearing. So next, first we have up Brian Workman. All right, I don't see Brian. That's okay. If he comes back, we'll let him, but I'm going to set that one to the side. Carol Rickett. Oh, you're right, I see that here. My apologies, Ms. Rickett. So it didn't get separated out of the pile. But I will go ahead and set you to the side. In fact, quite a few of these did not. That's okay. I'm going to head on. Here we go.
Hello to the council. My name is Kristi Hemmingway, and I live directly across the street from Allendale Elementary School at 5891 Oak Street. I'm a small business owner here in Arvada, and I've served both as a city employee and an educator in Jefferson County for over 20 years. My family has lived in our home for 16 years, and my children were raised in that house and in that neighborhood. When we first moved in, many of our neighbors were older adults who had lived here for decades. Over the years, we've seen a wonderful renewal. Newly married couples, young families, and first-time homeowners moving in and revitalizing not just our block, but the whole area. Many of these couples have concerns about where their children will attend school, so that number of 23 students actually only takes into consideration the number in that development, not the turnover of the neighborhood as a whole. Recently, that renewal has taken a troubling turn. However, we've seen more for-sale signs than ever before. And in talking with those neighbors, many have said that they're leaving specifically because of the proposed housing development at the Allendale site. So before a single shovel has hit the ground, this project is already eroding the stability and the spirit of our community. This project, while potentially bringing in 57 new families, is already gutting the surrounding neighborhoods. The stated mission of the Arvada City Council is to ensure the quality of life for its residents and make decisions that serve the best interests of the community. But the residents who are trying to leave are the community. These are the citizens who've lived and worked in Arvada for decades, some for their entire lives, and their voices need to matter. This proposed project does not enhance our quality of life. It threatens it. I own a short-term rental across from the site that will be facing years of dust, noise, traffic, and construction debris. Many of my neighbors work from home, and there's been no consideration for how sustained construction will disrupt our work, our safety, and even our access to reliable internet and the roads. Several homes will now have new houses built mere feet from their back fences, compromising privacy, solar access, landscaping, and property values. And let's be honest, Cardell Homes isn't accountable to this community. Their obligation as a company is to profit, not to preserve neighborhood well-being. Despite near unanimous opposition at every public meeting to date, they've refused to adjust the density of their plan or withdraw their rezoning request. And Jefferson County has yet to send a representative to a single meeting despite being the property owner. Yet this land could be used or even just incorporate so many things that do benefit the city, the county, and the residents, like a dog park.
Ma'am, your time is up, I'm afraid.
We, the citizens of Allendale Elementary, are asking our leaders to rise to the occasion, use this asset in a way that strengthens our community rather than diminishes it.
Ma'am, ma'am, I apologize, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please do better for your constituents.
Thank you.
Many of my comments are going to be identical to what I stated at the Planning Commission meeting. I support sustainable, thoroughly-vetted development to help with home affordability in the coming years and decades. This project hasn't stated a reason that they need a rezoning other than to pack more homes into the area that does not go with the neighborhood design, nor does it support sustainable or affordable development. Their development proposes $700,000 homes. The design asks for a rezoning of R7.5 to R6. The builder noted tonight that there are two examples of R6. Those examples are irrelevant. They're on much busier main roads that they are being put into. Arvada states that the purpose of RN7.5 is to, quote, "maintain the existing character and density of the neighborhood by ensuring new properties are not significantly smaller than existing residential lots", which is what all surrounding homes are in the neighborhood. Dividing lots in half, as requested to do under R6, doesn't maintain character. As a resident, if I wanted to demo my current home, I'm at 10938 West 59th Place, I didn't state that, and put two homes side by side for profit reasons only, you would look at me like I was crazy and likely deny my application. I think Cardell should have to follow the same standards. What does their development add to the existing community? Why can't a, quote, "vibrant, family-oriented" community, as stated by Cardell's representative at the 86 meeting, be vibrant under the current zoning? Additional problems that I have with the application are as follows. Arvada has already asked current residents to consistently take double-digit increases in their utility bills, namely water, over the next couple of years because of issues with current infrastructure. Unchecked development will only continue to exacerbate this problem. From page 118 of their application, the irrigation water demand calculations above show that the proposed single-family residential site has the same water usage as the existing Allendale school site based on the criteria provided. But we should be looking at ways to reduce the utility usage for the coming years, not maintain the status quo on an already stressed system. I also had problems with the traffic study because it did not take 59th Place into account, which is where one of the outlets for their development currently proposes. So there's two main outlets, and they propose that one outlet directly lines up with 59th, which is going to be a serious increase in traffic for residential neighbors. And I walk two dogs every day. That also connects to Quail Street, which is a main thoroughfare for the neighborhood, especially those accessing Arvada West High School. The traffic study conducted does not accurately reflect what happens in our neighborhood as it was conducted on a cold day in November 21st of last year. I just believe that a vibrant, family-oriented community could be built under RN7.5, but Cardell wants to maximize their profit at the expense of the existing community. I hope you'll back the Planning Commission's recommendation and the neighbor's wishes to deny the application to amend the major comprehensive plan and rezone Allendale at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tyler Ritchie.
Hi, my name is Tyler Ritchie. My address is 11569 West 59th Place, directly west out of 59th, just where the proposed exit is from the new build site. I guess I'd like to just say, I think we all know that this property is going to get sold by Jefferson County Schools. So, you know, however Jeffco decides to get rid of their property and whoever the lucky buyer is of the property, hopefully that can just balance out with the neighborhood and fit in, you know? If you think about this and you kind of follow the numbers, I understand why Cardell wants to put 57 units in there. It makes sense to me, right? They buy the property for $3.5 million bucks. We look at the guy's little pie chart up here. And if they can fit more units, they can maximize their profit. I mean, there's nothing necessarily wrong with that, except for the fact that rezoning it from the R7.5 to the R6 puts all of us that live in 7.5 in a unique scenario, right? And so my first question to Cardell is, you guys are so in tune with the details and the costs, and you care about the family, and you care about the communities, and you did all this stuff great in Canada on the prairie and all that other stuff. Just do the same thing here in Arvada. Buy the piece of property, keep it at 7.5, figure out how to put your houses on there. I know you guys make houses that fit in that coating. So the only real issue that's rubbing here has to do with the profit line that Cardell wants. And so I'd imagine, being the business that you are and being successful as you are, you could probably figure out a way to get that all taken care of. The other thing that I would propose to the city, right, is because if we follow the money, that's the big deal. As Cardell indicated, $255,000 bucks a year worth of profit from the mill levy and the taxes and all that other stuff. So if we go from 57 homes to 40, which was what would fit at the R7.5, instead of $255 for revenue, Arvada gets $210. So either way, the City of Arvada is pulling in a good amount of revenue, right? I would urge the City of Arvada to just go figure out someplace else to generate the $40,000 a year rather than on the backs of all of these neighbors and all of this neighborhood where it's been established and now we're going to go put in this high-density housing. I don't really have too much else to say except for I do think it's just purely about the money. So I'd ask you guys, as the city council, figure out how to generate the money from somewhere else besides rezoning it from R7.5 to R6. And I'd ask Cardell, figure out how to build the single-family homes that fit in the R7. You guys do it at Deer Creek. You guys do it down south. You've done it up in Westminster. There's all sorts of ways to do it. So just make it happen, and don't push it all upon us, who have lived in this community for a long time. We're welcoming you in here if you play by the rules. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Dix. I live at 587, excuse me, 0 Nelson Court. I share 300 feet of the south end of the schoolyard. The drainings and the traffic thing is really, that's not true. I've lived there 35 years, I've seen the traffic, and I know how the schoolyard drains. And if you take away all that grass, put cement in there, it'll drain right into my yard. But either way, I just hope you listen to the Planning Commission put my faith back in city government by listening to us and making the decision they made. And I hope you do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Frost.
John Frost, 6037 Owen Street. And I want to address, I share the same comments as some of the other speakers here today, but I want to call out a couple of things I noticed tonight. Numerous generic, undocumented, unsupported claims that we're going to establish a charity, and we're going to do this, and we're going to do that. But none of that, you have the opportunity to hold them accountable to that. If you approve this, my understanding from the discussions at the Planning and Zoning Commission is that that's all going to happen internal in the bureaucratic process. There will be no oversight from the city council to make sure that any of these promises are actually upheld. Clearly, you've visited the site. You know that this proposal does not fit with the RN7.5 neighborhood, doesn't preserve the character of the neighborhood, and it doesn't fit with the stated goals of the comprehensive plan. Changing this just for their benefit undermines your work on city council. It undermines the Planning Commission's counsel, as stated by our previous speaker. I agree that the traffic study was not done appropriately. As it is, the neighborhood residents avoid Oak Street. Adding this many more, I mean, up to 228 parking spots, we could see 228-plus more cars coming on Oak Street. They're not all going to go to the south. They're not all going to go east towards Vanderhoof Elementary School. They're going to go north. They're going to go to 60th Street, and they're going to zip down 60th East and West at way more than the stated speed limit. They're going to come screaming up Oak or Owen Street, where I see kids playing on a regular basis. That wasn't included in their traffic study. And it doesn't reflect the reality that not everybody leaves to the south. People go north up to 64th Street. And that wasn't addressed. And then the last, oh, they tried to mention how there's neighborhood parks, and they specifically called out Marge Roberts Park. Their proposed plan cuts off access from that site. There's currently access through the Allendale Elementary School, and then out the east side, you can access, there's a walking trail there that takes you all the way into Marge Roberts Park. That's no longer going to be there. So there will be no access to Marge Roberts Park from the west. And lastly, somebody else brought up the fact that this will bring new dollars into the city coffers. I thought it was a little tacky that they specifically called out the word coffers in their presentation, but that's just my opinion. But if we look at their own numbers, you know, their proposed revenue with the 57 houses at $700,000- or 57 houses at $700,000 apiece comes out to $39.9 million. They also said if we didn't, if you didn't rezon it...
Your time is up, but I'll give you just a second to close your thoughts.
Sure. If you don't rezon it, they're gonna build 3,700 square-feet houses on that same RN 7.5. That works out at the same dollar per square foot to 1.17, or $47 million in total profit. So there's a way for them to make this work and to put that same money into the city's accounts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nathan Rumley.
Nathan Rumley, 11008 West 59th Place. I'm before you here today to request the council's thoughtfulness about how we got to where we are, as well as the council foresight to see where things are going concerning future demand for Allendale Elementary. Allendale's neighborhood's aging population has been artificially skewed to an older demographic with high concentrations of seniors. The skewing to an older population within Allendale's housing stock has been caused by recent unprecedented low interest rates, causing homeowners who have historically moved on an average of every seven years to instead stay put. This high concentration of seniors will soon be selling their homes due to inability to care for them or and/or their homes. Per the Arvada Comprehensive Plan, I'd like to read you a quote that I found in there from the own Comprehensive Plan. "The 2010 census showed that Arvada has a high concentration of seniors, with a person aged 65 or older residing in 25% of all households. As the baby boom generation ages, this senior population will grow and require additional services and infrastructure. Projections estimate that the number of residents 70 or older will triple by 2035." And here we are in 2025. "With such a high percentage of seniors who will soon be unable to stay in their current homes, housing stock turnover will boom, bringing in new, younger families who will be looking to have families of their own. It will not be long until these new families bring increased schooling enrollment demand for their children. However, if these applications are passed, there will not be the infrastructure to serve them and no land on which to put a new school. Campbell Elementary has already been repurposed as an early childhood learning center. Van der Hoof is already above capacity, evidenced by it requiring two temp buildings to accommodate current student demand. And Fremont is also already at capacity as well, due to taking children from both Campbell and Allendale. This leaves only Allendale to meet future education demand. At the end of the day, there are many potential buyers for Allendale other than an easy sale to a for-profit developer builder such as Cardell Homes. It is my request, and I think the vast majority of citizens, that the council reject this application, request to amend and request to amend the Comprehensive Plan, as well as the application for rezoning in Allendale. These kinds of things are irreplaceable. If we let them go away, they're really, really hard to get back, if not impossible. Thank you for your time and consideration in doing what's right for Arvada and the future generations of children who will call the Allendale community home. I appreciate your consideration."
Thank you. Next, and I apologize if I misread this, I think it's Deanna, or maybe Diane Doherty?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of you this evening. Before I proceed first, I would like to point out that on August 6, City of Arvada Planning Commission opposed rezoning to R6. I too am opposed. This community primarily consists of ranch and bi-level homes to be towered over by 57 up-to-35-foot-high homes per R6. The proposed high-density development does not conform to the existing character and continuity and housing style of this community. Developer proposes two entry exits, both on Oak Street, which is a single-lane road, 25 miles per hour, long light at 58, stop sign at 60th. Daily backups due to increased volume of vehicles on Oak Street resulting from 120 to 150 additional vehicles from its residents and visitors entering and exiting area would be atrocious and definitely create safety issues for pedestrians, children, animals, and bicyclists. Traffic analysis reported stated providing direct connection to Oak and 59th Place would evenly distribute traffic. 59th Place does not access a major roadway. Majority of vehicles will exit community down Oak to 58 to access major roadways, 58th, Kipling, and Ward. Developers' traffic impact study was performed in winter and submitted March 2025, when local data collection didn't properly reflect increases in community activity, traffic, pedestrians, children, bicycles, dog walkers in the summer months. The traffic report used ITE trip generation rates. ITE provides a valuable starting point for trip generation analysis and is successfully used when numbers accurately reflect activity, but it is not perfect. When data used does not accurately reflect activity, conclusions are inaccurate. Accurate traffic density is crucial to accurate ITE rate conclusions. Data in the case did not properly reflect this community. Justification for rezoning impart was access to RTD. RTD bus stop at 58th and Oak is a local bus route, not an express route, virtually unused and will not improve with this proposal. The bus route involves excessive wait times, travel times, additional two to three hours out of a person's day, along with reliability issues. Most people value their time and find the stop to be, not to be, efficient or effective means of travel. Rail service would require driving to and from service points and is not within walking distance. In conclusion, it's you, our city representatives, turn down this proposed high-density development to all forward-thinking city representatives. I implore you to deny rezoning to R6 and preserve the character and continuity of housing style of this community, preserve the safety of this community. People want balanced, thoughtful growth, respect for existing neighborhoods. Most home rule cities plan their city thoroughly and thoughtfully...
With apologies, your time is up, but I'll let you wrap your thoughts.
...to the benefit of their city and their constituents.
Thank you. Next, we have Vanessa Kendrick.
Good evening, council. I'm here to actually testify in support of this. I am an Arvada resident, 5537 Lewis Court, Arvada 80002. I am a former past chair of the Arvada Chamber of Commerce, a local Arvada resident, and an Arvada Realtor. As a Realtor, I see firsthand how our limited housing supply restricts opportunities for families and professionals alike, myself included. $650,000, the projected home prices at Allendale, meet the needs of buyers earning between $140,000 and $160,000 annually, a critical income range for employees in Arvada's key industries. Without rezoning, fewer homes would be built, at higher starting prices, and that would only widen our existing affordability gap. In real estate, we know that expanding housing supply creates movement within the market. New homes allow existing homeowners to upsize or downsize, freeing up more attainable homes for others. That ripple effect supports stability at all levels of the housing spectrum. The Allendale rezoning is not just about density, it's about balance, meeting workforce demand, supporting local schools, and reinforcing the community's long-term economic health. I encourage the City Council to approve this rezoning as a forward-looking step that supports housing diversity, local businesses vitality, and Arvada's continued competitiveness in the region. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Travis Hendricks.
I'm an Arvada resident, 6310 Reed Street. I'm also a licensed architect, and I grew up in Denver. My wife and I were fortunate to move into Arvada in 2013. It was our first home purchase, and if we tried to do that today, we wouldn't be able to afford it. Both of my daughters attend Fremont Elementary, and the sale of the property of Allendale to Jeffco Public Schools would be a really big boon to the district right now, which is currently underfunded and in a windfall due to a lack of funding from a state and national level. That means that the reading teacher that my daughters utilize is going to be cut next year. They're both dyslexic, and they rely on that type of service. It's very expensive for us to pay outside tutoring, and without Jeffco making some changes financially, those type of services are gonna be cut. Enrollment keeps to drop, keeps dropping in Colorado, and we're in an affordability crisis. Adjusting zoning from an R7.5 to R7.6 would allow for attainable housing at prices that are commensurate with the surrounding neighborhood. Right now, it's already pretty expensive to be able to move in. My generation is having a very difficult time, I'm middle-aged, obviously. We're having a difficult time affording housing. Our younger staff, right now, doesn't even have that as a dream anymore. They're resigned to the idea of renting the rest of their lives. Putting single-family homes in the market needs smaller lots to be able to pencil out and to be able to meet an attainable rate that people can afford mortgages at. When I found out that the recommendation from the Planning Commission was to deny approval of this, I was rather shocked, especially when I heard that many of those members did it on the basis of a lack of density. We're talking about increasing density by going from 7.5 to 6. And in order to pencil projects right now in Colorado and keep it attainable, we have to go to smaller lot sizes and smaller homes, five per square footage. As a firm in Colorado specializing in residential architecture, the only development that we've seen in Arvada is townhomes, left and right, and most of those are for rent. And there's a reason why that is happening. If Arvadans wanna reject the idea of single-family homes being built again in the state, I wonder why we're mortgaging my family and my children's future and the American dream of owning your own home. So I ask you to support the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Harrison Wilterdink.
My name is Harrison Wilterdink. I live at 8430 Clarabelle Drive in Arvada, and I have three points that I would like to make to council tonight. First, I support the Comprehensive Plan amendment and the rezoning, and I hope that council supports both as well for the reasons stated in city staff's written recommendations. Second, I want to talk about the compatibility of this proposal with the surrounding area because there's a lot of mention about it in the agenda packet comments in the comments tonight. In simple terms, there have been a mix of single-family homes and duplexes and multifamily homes in the vicinity of this parcel since the 1950s, 60s, and 70s. In other words, this area has historically had a varied mix of home types, and the proposal fits well within that existing fabric. The project's character lies comfortably in the middle of what has existed in this neighborhood for well over 50 years. Third, I want to acknowledge what is most unique about this project, which is the difficulty of closing a public school like Allendale. This happened within the last couple of years for Arvada K-8, which is right next to my home, and I have felt the heartbreak and frustration in the room when the community realizes the tough decision to close must be made. At the same time, I want to be clear-eyed about how our city's housing policies play into declining school enrollment and closures like this. We know that housing costs are high today because there aren't enough homes to buy or rent, and so people compete for what is available, and that drives up prices. I've recited this statistic to council from our Housing Needs Assessment multiple times, but it bears repeating. As of 2021, our median home price of over $600,000 was out of reach for households making median wages in any industry in Arvada, even with one and a half earners per household. If a typical pair of full-time and part-time parents are increasingly unable to afford to buy a home here, or if two full-time working parents paying for childcare are increasingly unable to afford to buy a home here, is it any wonder that our school enrollments have slowly dropped to the point of closure? If we let more homes that families can afford to build, if we want more homes that families can afford to build their life in, we can start by simply letting more homes be built. This project does just that. On a bigger scale, we should be finding the ways in which our current process and our current zoning laws get in the way of building homes in the places where people want them, and in the sizes and different configurations that match their price needs. Long-term, we need zoning that works in favor of families, not against them. Short-term, the 57 homes proposed in this project are a positive step in the right direction, and I hope that council recognizes that benefit and votes in favor of the amendment and rezoning. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Next, we have Lindsay Reiner.
I'm Lindsay Reiner, 7502 West 80th Street. As the Chair of the Greater Arvada Chamber of Commerce, we represent nearly 600 organizations that depend on a strong economy and a thriving workforce. The chamber's priority is ensuring Arvada can attract and retain professionals who fuel our local industries, from health sciences to engineering to management. The proposed rezoning of the former Allendale Elementary site from RN 7.5 to R6 aligns perfectly with this goal. Allowing 17 additional houses enables more attainable price points that directly support Arvada's workforce needs. What stands out about this project is its balance. It meets community goals while offering a tangible public benefit. The developer is purchasing the property at a fair market value, assuming full responsibility for asbestos removal and demolition, which benefits Jeffco Public Schools. This type of private investment strengthens our entire community. The chamber views this rezoning as a strategic, economically sound decision that moves Arvada forward. We strongly urge City Council to approve it, to help maintain a healthy business climate and ensure community remains a place where both residents and employers can thrive. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott A. Phillips.
Good evening, council. I'm 8697 West 79th Place. As both a resident of Arvada and a chamber board member, I look at this project through a community lens, one focused on neighborhood stability and practical progress. The rezoning request is a modest but meaningful. It allows for additional homes to make the project financially viable without disrupting the existing neighborhood character. Importantly, it transformed what's currently a vacant property into a vibrant residential space. For those of us who live in Arvada, this proposal reflects thoughtful growth grounded in both care of the community and an understanding of our housing realities. I urge the City Council to support the rezoning because it is a practical, community-minded solution that enhances our neighborhood, supports local schools, and provides attainable housing options for those families who wish to call Arvada home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Colleen Tanish.
My name is Colleen Tanish, and I represent my husband Neil and my sons, who hope to reside in the same neighborhood but cannot afford to at this time. Thank you for taking, or giving this opportunity to speak. Yesterday, I observed some, I believe, city council members taking a visual survey of the Allendale school site. The school site is across the street from my home. I live at 5871 Oak Street. This has been a longtime family home of 34 years. We vehemently oppose the rezoning of this acreage in the middle of our other zoned neighbors. The rezoning of this area will allow Cardell Homes to severely impact the quality of life within this vibrant, longstanding community. Oak Street is already a main thoroughfare for Arvada West students and parents and all Allendale residents. Traffic during morning and evening commute hours on Oak are very heavy. Previous traffic studies that we are aware of have avoided these high-use times. Single-lane Oak Street cannot accommodate the traffic that will be generated by 50-plus high-density homes that only access Oak Street. There is no other access out of this planned lot. Emergency access, including police, fire, and rescue, will suffer a severe negative impact. Oak Street, again, will be the only access for crews, equipment, large haul vehicles if the project goes forward. That, along with the aforementioned issues, will severely diminish our living environment. Our community members are made, have made our position well-known to the previous board and were heard. Our elected City Council would do well to listen and follow suit. Please do what is right and ethical for your constituents. This is our home and neighborhood. This is our home and neighborhood. Please maintain its quality, peacefulness, and respect it as if it were yours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Johnson. I live at 11021 West 60th Avenue in Arvada. I'm speaking against the proposed development for the Allendale School Site. Having been defeated in their previous attempt to change the zoning of the site from RN 7.5 to RN 6, the developer is once again trying to circumvent the existing RN 7.5 zoning by convincing the city council to change the zoning for the site to RN 6. Statute 2-1-3-3 RN Residential Neighborhood in the Land Development Code states in Section A, Purpose, this is a quote, "The purpose of the residential neighborhood zoning district is to maintain the character of the mature, established neighborhoods in locations where residents expect that the character be relatively stable and allow development, redevelopment, and/or public projects that are consistent with a neighborhood's architectural character." Note that maintaining a neighborhood's character is accented three times in this statute from the Land Development Code. The purposes of the RN 7.5 District and the RN 6 District are incompatible and in conflict with each other as far as the character of a neighborhood is concerned. To many of us, local residents, an RN 6 zoning district in the middle of our existing RN 7.5 District would correspond to a large patch of dandelions in the lawn of our neighborhood. RN 6 zoning is not consistent with the architectural character of the properties surrounding Allendale School and violates the purpose of the RN zoning district. I'm asking the members of the city council to show courage in resisting pressure from those individuals who would negate the purpose of the residential neighborhood zoning districts and vote to not allow this proposed development, as well as to vote against instituting a change to RN 6 zoning for the Allendale School Site. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the sign-up sheets I have at this time. However, if there are more in chambers, sir, do I see you signaling you'd like to come? No, no, absolutely. So please, come on up, name and address, and then I would ask that you fill out a sign-up sheet and give it to Ms. Rush here. Oh, perfect, just didn't get a chance to get up to me. Then it's somewhere in this massive pile. All right, please, just name and address, and thank you, and my apologies sincerely.
All good, I'm just coming from DPS, finishing up parent-teacher conferences, sorry. Yeah, so I'm here, one, I think Mayor Simpson, at the beginning, you mentioned that you could clarify some stuff, so I guess one thing I would love clarified is how the Planning Commission, just two months ago, where many of us spoke, how that rejection, along a number of issues, one of them being safety, how we got from that pretty unanimous rejection to being here again, I'm kind of curious about if you could clarify. So obviously, I'm here to speak against it, as many of, actually, in fact, everybody who lives in that neighborhood is. The only people who seem to be in favor are the commerce people, and I think it's clear, this is about money. I don't love the idea that you're going to be putting houses in there, but I get it, we got to sell the property, houses, this is the way, so, okay, you can buy the property, we accept that, but the idea that you want to cram in more at the safety concern of us, and I know you conducted your study that one day in November, which I think we, the Planning Commission acknowledged was deeply flawed, it just feels a little insulting that we, the advisory group was against it, and we're not in favor, but we can accept you need to do this, but you're kind of cramming more, it just feels a little, it stings a bit. So on that, what else did I want to clarify? The safety, I think the issue of, hmm, I got my minute, I'm going to take it and think. I think the idea, if I recall, the Planning Commission, you guys mentioned providing housing, I've heard a number of people talk that. If you guys would drive around my community, hit 58th and Miller, new complex off with availability, go right across Stenger, there is housing with availability, sorry, I'm here. I like to talk to people, it's a teacher.
I know, but we asked to us.
Gotcha, gotcha. So drive around on 64th where Oak hits, there are two new developments with signs up about vacancy. I guess I just feel like in my community, everywhere I look, there is this availability of housing with a range of prices and configurations, and so, does it have to come into my neighborhood? I suppose it could, but to have this extra to change the character of my neighborhood, when I think that gentleman just stated that was the purpose of the commission, is to maintain. I think the gentleman back there from the Chamber of Commerce mentioned that it's not changing literally, that is what you are being asked to do, change the character. And finally, with my last 28 seconds, Marriott, this is your district, so I would hope you hear us one last time, you've always been a good listener, this is your constituency pointing out that this is not what is best for us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, anyone else in chambers who would like to give comment at this time? If you've already gone on this item, I apologize. Sir, anyone else? Name and record, and I'll ask that you fill out a speaker sheet with Ms. Rush.
It's up there, but I didn't want to speak, but now I do.
Okay, absolutely, no problem.
So, my name is Clyde Carroll. I'm at 6047 Owen Street, which is about a half a block from the proposed site. Just so you all know, and you have the plans apparently up there, there's only one way in and out of that. One, onto Oak Street, that's it. You can't get to 59th, there's a stop sign, there's a house to the north, and a driveway that they use. There's no 59th access other than to come out to a stop sign. But you have to go out to Oak to get there. There's going to be, I don't know if you've ever seen Oak Street? It's only so wide, people park on the street. Now, we're going to have trucks, cement mixers, bulldozers, in and out all the time. It's going to shut off the ability to go south on Oak Street. So I am fully against this, and like the last speaker was saying, anybody that was speaking on behalf of this doesn't live in our neighborhood. They live way north, or at least north enough that the next major artery, which is 64th, is readily accessible. We have to live there. We have to deal with three years of construction? I mean, it's, that's a burden, so I'm a no. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirsten Moore.
So, thank you. Yes, my name is Kirsten Moore. I live at 6052 Newcomb Court. So I'm not right adjacent to the school, however, the property. However, as many people have already pointed out, Oak Street is a one-block street, and there is already an outlet from 59th, and the current design would lead to also needing access from, it looks like, two different outlets onto and from Oak Street, from the complex. And that's not a lot of space. And again, as has been pointed out, the traffic study was done for one day near Thanksgiving in November. Only one day. So that's not much data to pull from. I did catch that you had some questions about the sun blockage on the solar panels of the houses on the north side of what the development would be, so I do hope you are going to ask more about that for the sake of the folks who invested a lot of money in solar. And, forgot what else I was going to say, so, oh, for the affordability issue, I understand that part of housing prices is driven by lack of, can't think of the word for it, but volume of houses. However, $700,000 is not what I would consider an affordable house. If I didn't already own a house that I was selling, I wouldn't have been able to afford to buy the house I'm in now. I had that, basically, I had equity to put into it that gave me an affordable mortgage. And the fact that you have to be earning over $100,000 to upper $100,000s towards $200,000 to afford it does not, to me, spell, let's make it accessible to people who are starting homes or who want to age in place. I think it's a little weird somebody would pay $700,000 for somebody to age in space, that's not my decision, that would be theirs, but I think it's concerning that no consideration is taken into actually making it affordable for people to move into the neighborhood. And yes, there are children that play in the street, both on Oak, on Owens, on Newcomb, and in that stretch of 61st, that's between the two entrances from Allendale, where people do come flying down Allendale, and that section of the street doesn't have any stop signs, so it's sort of an honor system to get through. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing, and I will turn it over to council for questions, clarifying more information at this time. Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, I have a few questions. One is from, I think, the city, in that we were given information that the, with this plan, the impermeability of the site would only increase by 6%. And I'm curious as to how that was calculated with the addition of the streets and 57 homes compared to the current property of, like, the parking lot and the current facility? So is there more information available about how the impermeability, what, was calculated?
I believe maybe our engineering group could answer that, or...
Yeah, I'll bring up my, our traffic, or our civil engineer, who can describe that a little bit further.
Okay. For the audience, the applicant or the expert's witness are allowed to answer questions, so these are questions for staff or for applicant if they have the expert information we need. Sorry, you're back there confused, we're good.
Good evening. My name is Travis Fraser with Redland, civil engineer. So we did the preliminary drainage analysis on the property, so we looked at the existing site, the parking lot area, the roof of the school, a lot of the impervious area of the playground that's unvegetated, and then we compared that to the impervious area that would be generated with the new development, which would be the roads. But you have to keep in mind that when you have single-family lots, you have a house with a roof, but there's also the yard, all the open space we're generating, and when we did those impervious calc's, we actually showed that we're reducing the imperviousness of the site by 6%. In addition to that, we mentioned in our presentation that we are providing an onsite detention and water quality pond. So the purpose of that pond is to further reduce the runoff flows from the property. So all the stormwater that runs off from the project will be captured in the pond, treated for water quality, and then released at historic rates, which actually are pre-development conditions, so it's released at a slower rate than even occurs today, because no pond or stormwater infrastructure exists on the site to provide detention or water quality.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation on the impermeability, I appreciate it. I have another question, this one's for the developer, of why we were asked for a rezoning request to RN 6 instead of rezoning request to duplexes, which seemed like it would have maintained the lot size that would match the neighborhood? Like, what was your, what was your calculations about, you know, the feasibility of building the same density through duplexes, which seems to match the neighborhood more?
I think you are correct, to our east, RN D allows for duplex product. If you look at the code under RN 6, the lot size for a duplex product is 4,000 square feet, so it's actually 8,000 square feet if you split it in half with your two duplexes, it is a 4,000-square-foot lot, similar to what we are asking for tonight, 4,000. We just, from a market standpoint, single-family detached is more attain, or more attractive to buyers, and, you know, they will roughly be the same price if you build a duplex product on the same 4,000-square-foot lot compared to a single-family detached on a 4,000-square-foot lot.
Okay, thank you. And then, my last question is, if there's any more information that can be provided on the traffic study? It was done for one day during Thanksgiving week, there were no other traffic studies, or was there any other information?
I'll bring up our traffic engineer who could speak a little bit more on that.
Hi, I'm Cassie Slate with Fox Tuttle Transportation Group, and I'm the traffic engineer on this project. Yes, the counts were taken in November, not on Thanksgiving week. We, I was actually out there when the equipment was put out there. There was snow on the ground, but it was no hazardous conditions. Schools were in session, there was nothing else that was an accident or anything that would have created traffic patterns to be different than a typical day. We scoped traffic studies with your city staff. We work through a scoping forum, we make sure we're accounting for all of the intersections that are needing to be included, and then we make sure that schools are in session, there's not bad weather, all of these things. I drove around multiple times that day to make sure. And then, also on a snowy day, we actually get more vehicles, because people drive more than they would walk or bike. So that gives us a more conservative baseline. Also, understand that the existing condition is not the only thing we look at. That is just the baseline condition. We are trying to understand what's there today, we're trying to understand what the patterns are today, that helps in everything else that we forecast out to 20 years. So we look at that, and then we work with the city staff, and we have CDOT data, we have state data, and local data, regional data, county data, everything. We then decide on how much growth is also happening in the area regardless of this project. So we then forecast out, from existing, we look at the short-term future, a long-term, 20-year future, with and without this project.
Okay, thank you, that's all the questions I have.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Pfeifer, you are next.
Quick questions. I want to go back to, maybe back to the applicant, thank you. So what was rationale with RN 6 versus just going with an RN 7.5? Like, what's the nuts and bolts of why you wanted to go that way?
So, the nuts and bolts is, there's a difference between, I think, 17 different, we could achieve 17 more homes within the RN 6 designation, and this is really not about a money grab, it's about attainability and compatibility with our neighbors. You know, the current, current existing product, if we go to the RN 7.5, we will have to build a bigger home with a price point a million plus, which we believe is not very compatible with the surrounding product. Under the RN 6, it is very similar square footage and very similar pricing, which is very, you know, compatible with our neighbors. And sure, we will have to build a higher price point product to make a profit.
So when you look at the market around, you're saying that you are compatible to the existing homes, even on a smaller lot?
Correct, we believe so.
So smaller lot, smaller house?
Smaller lot, smaller house.
Same price?
Very similar price to our surrounding.
What's being sold right now in the area? This is a pet peeve of mine, but I'm going to get into your engineering, your utility easements, your utility easements, they look to be in front of the houses. So am I going to look at a neighborhood that has a bunch of green transformers all in the driveways? This is one thing I will tell you I just cannot stand.
So, so right now, the intent is to have the, you'd have dry utilities, so gas would be in the front of the lots?
And that's fine.
And electric distribution be in the rear.
That doesn't show it in your drawings, so I'm just going by the evidence.
That'll be clarified with our...
I'm just, yeah, I'm just going by what's presented, and it doesn't say that.
And Councilmember Pfeifer, remember, we're not looking at the site plan, the final site plan design.
I'm looking at the evidence provided to me, which is the conceptual plan, and I'm going to go by what's on there. So I just don't see, I see the easement's only... So I just don't see, I see it, the easement's only in the front of all the properties except for the south side. So why I'm interested in that is because I think it impacts the drainage as well and how accessibility is to those easements. I'm not going, I think I've, okay, going to the shade study? Do you want to go to those pages? I don't know who's driving. Oh, you're driving? Yeah, the first, start with the first one, then we might toggle between the first and second one. So are you proposing all two-story homes on that north side?
We were just, we are just showing kind of the worst-case scenario, which would be all two-story homes on that north side. As it stands, we plan to offer a mix of two-story and ranch homes. So, so for the purpose of the conversation with the neighbors, we wanted to show the worst-case scenario, which would be a two-story home. And this first slide shows four instances throughout the season. So you would have spring, summer, autumn, and winter, because obviously, as you know, the sun is in a different position. So we felt like investigating the shade at those different times of year was important.
Okay. And then can you go to the next page? I think what confuses me is, this is, can you explain this maybe? Maybe I shouldn't even assume. Why don't you explain this picture to me?
So the image on the left side is obviously the, a condition where there is no development to the south of the existing homes. So that would be, I'll say, similar to what's there now because the school building is set back quite a ways from that property line. The image on the right is if those 28-foot-tall two-story homes were on that property line. So there is a shade that is created there. The other thing I would like to point out is that the shade study was done with one of our first land use plans. So there are more proposed homes shown in this exhibit than we are now proposing. I believe that we have three less homes on that property line than originally. So this would be even less impact now. The shade study was not updated as the land use plan was updated.
Mayor, if I may, I believe we have the video available at this point, and we can show that simulation.
I think we should.
Yeah, let's do that, please. And just for clarification to our applicant, it's two less homes along the north side, correct? Two or three?
Well, they're pulling up the video. Let me double-check, just I don't want to give you the wrong information.
Thank you, yes.
Our original land plan that was shown to staff originally and presented at the first public meeting showed 13 lots on that northern boundary. After our first round of public input, we reduced that number to 12. And on our current land plan, shows 10. So from the beginning of the process to today, we have lost three lots on that, I shouldn't say lost, we have moved or relocated three lots on that northern property line.
So you took some of the open space and put them over there?
We, we did move a couple of the lots into the open space with our final revision between planning commission and today. Yes, that's correct.
Did that change your percentage of open space?
It did change the percentage of open space slightly, but we still maintain the 20% open space required by the zoning.
So where did it go from into?
I can't speak to that specifically. I don't, I don't have the number in front of me. I, I don't, I, it's, it's, we lost 8,000 square feet.
Looks like the gentleman behind you may have information on this clarifying point.
Kind of on a different point. If we, if we stay at the RN 7.5, we will not have to dedicate any open space or parkland to it. So under the R6, we are donating a little, over an acre of open space and parkland to, to our site.
That's open to the public.
That, that is correct.
Even though it's maintained by an HOA?
It will be maintained by an HOA. We will install and develop it, and it will be maintained by the HOA.
And open to the public.
And open to the public.
Yeah, okay.
Can we run the second simulation one more time?
There we go. There's been a request to run the second simulation one more time. Here we go. Presuming this is summer moving into fall.
So this is, this is during one day.
One day. This is one day.
So, and, and the, the conversation around the shade studies development where we had folks that were concerned about shading the solar panels on the homes to the north. So that, that's what this was specifically in relation to.
Okay.
So what shows that even on the solar panels are going to be?
Yeah. I, well, I think the rest I just have comments right now, so I'm done. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Counsel member Davis.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for this presentation. So I'm just wondering, I've heard some comments about the homes not being compatible, and I'm just wondering, are, are the homes that are nearby quite uniform? Or are they different shapes and sizes?
There are a variety of home styles. There are some, some bi-levels, some tri-levels, and some ranches, and some of the, some of the bi-levels, just giving the grading of sites, appear to mimic a two-story home, just by the grade of the site.
Okay, but, so these won't be too terribly out of scope with the neighborhood, then?
Yes, it sounds like they were proposing possibly a mix of ranch and two-story homes, so that would be consistent.
Okay. And the detention pond, where it's located, are there going to be any safety measures?
Typically, you know, with regard to safety measures for the detention pond, the biggest safety measure is the drain times. So we make sure the ponds have to meet certain drain times, so you're not having standing water for long periods of time. We also designed the slopes of the pond so that it's easy access, to be mowed and maintained, and maintenance vehicles can get in there. If you're talking about a fence or anything like that around the pond, we're not at that point in the process where we've determined if that's going to be included.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that. And I just had the same questions about the solar study. Still a little glitchy on it, but I'll save that for comments.
Mayor Proton Mormon.
Well, I'll just follow up on the solar study, then. So if I understand correctly, the, the December 21st, 8 to 4 p.m. is what we saw the whole change in on the video? And, and how many, I guess my question is, if that is the worst-case scenario, which is what I thought I heard, how many hours would the shade be blocking the solar panels from the new homes?
So, the, the number of daylight hours in the day are inherently shorter in December, and the sun is at a lower angle in December. A lot of the shade, and it, it's, it's, I recognize that it's hard to see in these images and hard to see in the video, but a lot of the shade created on the solar panels is actually by the existing homes themselves. So like, for instance, the home on the very far left, as you can see, it has that L shape. So as the sun moves, the L shape creates the shadow, not necessarily the two-story home to the adjacency. But, that being said, there is a shade component that happens on the shortest day of the year with the lowest sun angle. There, there is shade that is generated by those two-story homes. I, I don't, I can't specifically answer your question, how many hours of day shade is provided, because some of the solar panels don't get any shade at all in that period, and some of them get more. So it is property-specific. And we can certainly look at it closer and get back to counsel if that would be helpful in some way.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be helpful to get a little more understanding of what is happening there.
May I just ask, so that I'm, we could certainly do something where it is a still shot of hour by hour. I would have to ask my 3D guy if he could make the shade of the existing houses a different color than the shade of the new houses, so you could kind of see what was causing what? I don't know if that's possible, but I can ask. So that's also partly why we have the two images, one showing it with the new homes and one showing it without the homes, so that you can see what is shade created by the existing structure versus shade that is created by the new homes. We can also update the model to show, you know, the nine lots instead of 13.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Question for staff on traffic study. So I heard that this traffic study was only conducted on one day, and that is our common practice when we do these traffic studies?
I will defer to our engineer on that.
Okay.
Yes, we typically see something like this where it's one day, they come out, they take their counts, but, sorry, I'll defer to the traffic engineer that did the study to comment a little bit more, but we see that in a lot of reviews, similar timeframes.
Okay, thank you. So I appreciate the earlier questions about RN 7.5 and on R6 and understanding the differences. But I heard different answers today than what I read in the record for the planning commission. So I, I read in the record that we were talking about a difference of one home, and then I heard today 15. So I can get some clarification on that, please.
Yes, it depends a little bit on how you do the calculation, and without a specific site plan showing an RN 7.5 development, it's, it's a little difficult to answer that in terms of number of units. But if you just take the gross density of a, of an RN 7.5 development, which if you take 7,500 square foot lot divided by an acre, 43,560 square feet, you get a density of 5.8 dwelling units per acre. The zoning that they're requesting allows a maximum density of six dwelling units per acre, and what they're proposing is 5.9 dwelling acre, dwelling units per acre. So it's a very small increment between the two if you're looking at just gross density of a site.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all my questions for the moment, thank you.
Counsel member Pfeiffer?
Can I build on that?
Yes, please, because I was going to otherwise.
But the way you did that calculation assumed it was just a blanket, whatever, nine acres. But the, their calculation includes a road, I'm assuming, so that deducts out of usable land.
It does, and that's why I said gross acreage, because we calculate density on gross acreage. So it's the same thing with their site that they're proposing in the R6. That is a gross density across the site. Once you take out roadways and the open space, the actual density of the homes is probably a little higher, just like it would be in the RN 7.5 as well.
Okay, so the, so the R6 statement, you said about 5.9 is gross?
Yes, 5.9 is approximately what they're proposing with this project.
Of the gross, and then the other 5.84, whatever you just did, was the RN 7.5 gross, not net gross?
Correct. Both of those are gross, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I want to continue to build upon this quick point, because since we're on it, to the applicant, because we have heard several numbers bandied about whether it's the loss of one unit, the loss of two units, the loss of 17 units, which is a drastically different number. I just want to clarify. To lose 17, which is very different than one, to Mr. Smithana's point, if you were to just do gross, like one road, and then the subdivision, much like how the surrounding area is done, do then you lose one to two, whereas if you were to keep the model as it is, but just make the lot sizes larger, but include the open space, include the trail, include the detention, that's how you lose 17?
So, so, it, it isn't necessarily a loss. I would say it's more of a delta, right? So it, it, the question is hard to answer in the way that, when you have a 7,500 square foot lot, on a big planning level, right? Big umbrella, planning umbrella. When you have a 7,500 square foot lot, and you have a 75-foot frontage and 100-foot depth or some combination thereof, the way that the site is divided up is different. So it, it may change the efficiency of how the lots are laid out, meaning you may end up with an area where instead of having a lot fronting a street and then a lot behind it fronting the other street, sorry, I'm trying to use my hands poorly, you may or may not have enough depth to go to the property line to get a third row of homes. We didn't investigate the 7.5 very deeply, partially because early on in this process, the recommendation from staff was to go with an R6 zoning. So we, we didn't do what in the planning world we call a yield study, where you go in and you lay out if the lots face northwest, or north-south, they look like this. If they face east-west, they look like this. If you use a cul-de-sac, you get this yield. If you use a loop road, you get this yield. So you end up in, at this point with basically a mathematical question of, are you calculating by the gross, where you're literally just taking the math? Are you making assumptions? So like, for instance, on our side, I kind of did the math earlier today, and the way that I would think through the math is, okay, you have the 9.66 acres, you multiply that out by the 3, 43, 65, you know, gives you this. I would subtract 20% for roadways and detention, because I know that you're going to lose approximately that much just to lay something out, which gives you potentially X number of lots. But there's, there's a lot of subjectivity on how that gets calculated, because you aren't taking into account the hard dimensions of the site. I am not answering your question because I don't have a better answer for you.
No, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure, because we are bandying about quite a few hard numbers, but we don't actually have that information of how many could be calculated on this site other than just blanket, but that doesn't take into the actual site realities. We can't objectively say how many would go under the 7.5 zoning.
Yep, yeah, we, we, without looking at it and doing a couple of yield studies, and you know that, to the, to the same point to it, I'm just making up an example. The developer might come in and say, I only want a cul-de-sac, and be willing to gain or lose lots based on that criteria. Or my lots have to be 150 feet deep and still meet the 7,500 square foot requirement because my product needs 150 foot of depth. Those, those types of requirements also have to be considered when, when what we call a yield study is completed. So there are just a lot of variables that we didn't go down that rabbit hole because we weren't, our direction early on was to pursue the R6 zoning, and so that's how our yield studies were developed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Counsel member Rupert, you were next.
Thank you. There was a zoning chart that compared seven and a half, the seven-five and the six.
Yep.
And most of the criteria in that comparison, they were similar. The differences were that the minimum square footage of the lot for a 7.5 is very much larger, but it doesn't have the open space requirement.
Correct.
The point is that between the two, you're shrinking lot size, so you're shrinking yards and creating open space. That's the trade-off. Pretty much everything else in that table, they're pretty similar.
It, it, we feel that it's very similar, and in the places, let me phrase that differently. On the north side of the property, where the north boundary of our property is, we did try to move that density into the center of the site to make those lots wider. So instead of having a 40-foot frontage, I think we're up to a 57-foot frontage. So we, we did try to rearrange where the lots were installed to help with the visual mitigation of, of the density.
So next question I have, because we have smaller lots, we're giving up space to open space, the setbacks, particularly over on the side with the duplexes, and maybe this is staff question, the setbacks on the existing duplexes appear to be what the setback would be for the new lot as proposed. Is that accurate?
Let me do a quick measurement here, just to be, verify. They are a little, they are a little deeper than the minimum setback.
Okay.
So it looks like they do, there's a range... So it looks like they do, there's a range, but they're probably within, they're about thirty to thirty-five feet of depth.
Okay. Little change in topic. I want to verify that we're going to have a mix of one-story ranch and two-story housing in the proposed subdivision. It's not all two stories.
That is the intent, correct.
All right. There is a, as pointed out by one of the neighbors, a path that goes between the playground and the duplexes to the east and eventually access to the park.
Yes.
I want to verify or make sure, actually make a condition, that whatever resulting plan we get here continues that path, so we have accessibility between park spaces.
Yes, and that was my oversight in the presentation, to not mention that A, we are aware of it, and B, that we intend to keep it as we move through the site planning process, because providing that east-west connectivity is very important for the neighborhood. And as the neighbor said, it does make the difference between being able to access the park and having to go like all the way around, very far around, to get to the park. So yes, we are aware of it. I think we're happy to have that as a condition, if council feels that's appropriate.
Well, certainly at least one council person does. Finally, you know, we get stuck on this term "character." But if "character" means that we have to build nineteen-sixties housing in two thousand and twenty-five, that cannot mean, that cannot be the meaning of "character." I do suppose that "character" is some continuity in lot size. That's one interpretation of it, but my own interpretation is if we cannot build housing affordably, meaning that a builder can still turn a profit and build a house on a lot that is the size that the seven point five requires, then we are going to have to give somewhere if this property is going to be put to good residential use. And, and so this is where I'm struggling with getting to that compromise. No, I don't think anyone wants to disrupt the lifestyle of the people in the neighborhood. I don't think that's the case at all. And we actually have a strategic plan that says that we need to increase both the volume and the variety of housing in our city. So that is also one of our values. And I'm struggling to maintain the balance between those two things as we sit here. My last issue is the traffic on Oak, because I think Oak in its original design wasn't designed to accommodate all the traffic it gets at this moment. The traffic study, if it was done while the school was in operation, that school was actually underutilized when it was open. It was down to a hundred and fifty kids, if my memory serves. And I'm a little concerned about the traffic volume with adding the households. I simply am, because we, that whole area drains to two intersections. And, and that's a problem, it seems to me.
One clarification, that school was not in session, but schools in the area were in session. So, because that school can't be in session when counts are taken. And so...
It was already closed.
It's been closed for several years, and so, yeah, we cannot take that count.
I'm aware, believe me.
Yeah, totally. And also, yes, that roadway does today, handles about nine hundred trips per day. And that road is built to be able to hold up to about fifteen hundred trips per day. That's what its capacity is, per city standards.
Thanks. That's all we've got.
Councilmember Marriott?
I have a question for our staff. Seems to me that one of the cruxes of this decision is that in a neighborhood that's already zoned, R seven point five, if there was a vacant lot or two or three, that it would be very clear that those should be developed as R seven point five lots to match or fit in with the existing neighborhood. But if there were adjoining property to this that was sizable, we don't even allow the R seven point five zoning to a kind of a new development that's not just pieces of an existing seven point five per unit or per acre development. Is that correct? Or could a developer come and propose acreage and say, we want to develop it under this standard?
There is a little bit of a gray area in the Land Development Code, but generally, the code states that the RN districts, and we have a number of RN districts besides just the seven point five, but the RN districts were intended to overlay existing neighborhoods, and that the R districts, the six, thirteen, and twenty-four, were intended for new development. So, you know, a school redevelopment is maybe a little bit of a gray area in that sense. But as a general rule, larger parcels with new development were intended to go to those R districts versus the RN districts.
Okay, and so that was going to be my next question is, do we have any kind of, oh, I don't know, standards by which, or decision point by which we make the definition difference between those two things? If, if this were a half an acre inside this neighborhood, I think it's easy. If it's four hundred acres next to this neighborhood, I think it's also easy. But where is the place where it's clear that, you know, that it should be one or the other, and there's not this question about, about which way should it be?
Yeah, I mean, again, it is a little bit of a gray area, but if you kind of read the various sections of the Land Development Code, you know, we talk about new development in the sense of PUDs being five acres. We talk about the notice changes and difference, notice distances at five acres. So we've kind of looked at that five acres as more or less a breakpoint, give or take.
Right, okay. I think that's the only question I have. I'd like to reserve the ability to make the motions here whenever everybody's ready.
The motion is yours, Mr. Marriott. So I have a few questions myself, even though we've sort of covered a few of them. So thank you, Councilmember Rupert, for bringing up access to Marge Roberts Park and the thruway. I was going to ask about that. I heard Councilmember Davis, under her breath, go two. I see Councilwoman Mormon, I make four, that's a majority. So the continuation of the path, if this passes tonight, obviously, I have no idea how it's going to go, because we're all watching in real time together. But if this were to pass, the continuation and the access would be conditional upon your approval.
And I think that would be absolutely appropriate, and we would be happy to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you. We talked a little bit about the, the traffic study, but I do just want to ask the traffic engineer, come on back. Particularly, so the traffic study, it said that it only focused on Oak Street. Is that true? Did we only look at Oak? Because, yes, the entrance and exits are directly onto Oak, but did we look at the surrounding streets as well?
Yes, we did. We had everything from Sixtieth down to Fifty-Eighth. And we did have, I know someone said that Fifty-Ninth Place was not included, that was, the counts were taken there. And we did attach that fourth leg there. And we did get then like the Fifty-Eighth, the one that's right above, like about fifty feet north of Fifty-Eighth Avenue.
Okay, thank you. So Fifty-Ninth was included?
Correct.
And it was also said that it avoided the peak times, but if you counted during school hours, so morning and afternoon rush?
Yeah, we counted at seven to nine AM, which is the morning peak. And then that's broken down into fifteen-minute increments, and we find the hour, that is the peak of the peak. And then we also do four to six PM. So we always, we do not avoid peak periods.
Okay, so you do the peaks.
Yeah, and the daily counts are out there for twenty-four hours. So they are out there for every hour of the day, and they get directional counts as well.
Okay, thank you. And I recognize, and I want to be clear, because I know our city attorney is going to pipe in here in a minute. We are looking at the Comp Plan Amendment and that we are also looking at the rezoning and if the zoning is appropriate. So I know we're not doing a site plan approval this evening. All of that with site design and whatnot would come later. But we can provide guidance, I guess, here tonight on what we think would be appropriate for a site plan. And so with that, I guess my concern then is the very valid concerns of construction sounds with the neighboring area. Are there ability to help mitigate the construction impacts on the surrounding area, should this move forward, and should it get all the way through the approvals process?
Excuse me. Yes, we will follow the Arvada regulations of when we can actually do our development. I'm not very specific what those times are, but I believe it's sometime in the morning and then five-thirty, six o'clock at night. We will not be constructing anything out of those timeframes.
Thank you. And you wouldn't be blocking any streets or anything of that nature?
Everything will be on our site. We will park our machinery on-site. If we need to park it elsewhere, it will be off-site at a different location, not on Oak Street.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. We don't want any undue burdens on the neighborhood. And then just going kind of back to our competitive zonings, because where I'm trying to reconcile my thoughts here, because we do want to listen to all of you. We do want to listen to the community. And where, so I'm trying to put all the different pieces together, if you will, and make them all work inside of the puzzle inside of my head. And so with that, I hear that folks want the lower-density items, or lower-density plan. However, the trade-offs with that are that you feasibly would not have the open space, you would not have the trail connection and all of that. Moreover, you would have much larger lot sizes that are inherently incongruent with the surrounding neighborhood. Is this correct?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the same thing again and not answer your question, but just speak to it on a couple of high-level planning points. So in an infill development especially, there are existing conditions that have to be accounted for as far as costs are concerned. So in this instance, we have the demo of the school and the asbestos abatement. You have aging infrastructure that's in place that either has to be updated or removed and replaced, reconnected, whatever. Whether you're using a R six or an R seven point five, you are still providing all of that water, sanitary, gas. You're still providing all of the street connections. You're still demoing out the existing school and making all of those, taking the existing site and making it buildable, so to speak. So what ends up happening is you end up absorbing all of that cost, and instead of dividing it amongst fifty-seven units, you're taking all of that cost and dividing it among, and I'm just making up a number, you're dividing it amongst forty lots. So where you end up on a big level planning is the balance between having a larger lot that may be attractive to some segments of the market, but maybe not others, with a higher price point, because now you're absorbing, you're absorbing a hundred percent of that cost in a smaller number of units. You're, you're making them less attainable. In this instance, the existing, the price point of the existing neighborhood and where we think the R six units might come in are going to be a lot closer together than a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house across the street from a million-and-a-half-dollar house. That, to me, isn't particularly comparable. But what ends up happening is when you're taking all of those costs and all of the design and all of the permitting and all of the fees and this process through the city, which whether you're doing one unit or a hundred units is the same, you just have less ability to spread that cost out to make the units attainable.
Yes, that does make sense. Thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah. It's going to cost the same amount to do remediation, no matter what, so are you, how is that spread across? So, thank you. I think that's all the questions I have. And then I will just note, for a couple of the clarities, because a resident did ask about Planning Commission, how could it fail and then be back here? So the Planning Commission is an advisory board. It does not actually hold decision, like, decision authority. So we take their recommendations, they're in our packet. We actually hold the approval powers. They do not. So when something passes or fails at Planning Commission, we get that information, we include that. And it is up to the developer at that point, if they choose to come to us or if they want to stop, redesign. We see both. We have seen when planning has denied and something has come before us. We have seen where it doesn't before, and so I just wanted to make that clear. Why, because I know it looks and feels pretty much exactly like this hearing, but that's why it's a little bit different. They are an advisory board to us. They are not the actual decision body, which this body is. So with that, I will open it to any, oh, Councilmember Pfeiffer, thank you.
A quick question. So on the administrative approval or review, I still can use a call-up if we need to on that. All right, anything administrative can still be called up to council for review? Okay, just want to confirm that the site plan was still part of that.
And for members of the public who may not be familiar, what a call-up is, is essentially, council has the ability, so when something goes through the administrative site review and is approved administratively by the team, the council is alerted to that decision. And then if we feel that there needs to be a public hearing, because, you know, there is a strong public interest in the project, we have the ability to then say, we still think this project should go to a public hearing and issue a quote "call-up," where then we come back to this format like we are all here right now. Ms. Morris, I believe you wanted to weigh in on the actual criteria of what we are evaluating tonight only.
Yes, thank you. So before you get into your deliberations and make your decision, I did want to bring us all back to the criteria. Tonight, you're making two different decisions. You're making a decision on the request for rezoning and also on the Comp Plan Amendment request. Both of those decisions have very specific criteria that council is required to base their decision on. So as you go through your deliberations and make your decision, be prepared to connect your decision to those criteria. If you find that the criteria are met, then you can say the criteria are met. If you find that the criteria are not met for some reason, cite to a specific criteria and then describe why you believe that criteria is not being met based on facts which came into the record, either in the packet or came into the record tonight. So I just want to make sure that we're focused on that as council moves forward and prepared to make those citations to the criteria and facts in the record as we move forward. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions at this time? Otherwise, I will turn, Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Well, I just want to clarify the call-up too. Call-up would be on the site plan, and it would only be discussing the site plan. So just so everyone understands, we're not going to revisit the same hearing. We would revisit the administrative review of a site plan, is what I'm asking.
Correct.
Just to be clear, okay.
Correct. Councilmember Marriott, you have reserved the motions.
So I'm going to move that our twenty-five dash zero-nine-three, a resolution by the Arvada City Council for the City of Arvada, Colorado, to amend the twenty-fourteen Arvada Comprehensive Plan land use designation pertaining to the former Allendale Elementary School from City of Arvada Public quasi-public to City of Arvada Suburban Residential. A parcel of land located at fifty-nine hundred Oak Street be approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact as determined from this evening, and I'll make a comment about it. So, you know, given that the unique comprehensive plan designation of this site and the lack of there being any possibility for that comprehensive planning designation to be used in the future, changing the comprehensive plan makes perfect sense. I find it also complies with, you know, all seven criteria for amending the comprehensive plan as contained in the staff report. And so for that reason, I will be voting yes on amending the comprehensive plan.
Councilmember Ambrose?
I'll also be voting in support of this amendment to the comprehensive plan, because, you know, I just want to say, it's really hard for a neighborhood to go through a school closure and to have it not be returned back to any public use. And I just want to say, I'm sorry, that's what is happening here for Allendale, that the city couldn't find another way to make it be for public use, that we didn't have the funds, and that, you know, they couldn't find a buyer that could turn it into like an early learning center or a childcare or something like that that would mimic like what a school is going through. And so I just feel like we do have to change the comprehensive plan, because at this point in the process, there's just, it's not going to go back to the public. And I just want to acknowledge that hard reality of that we do have to change the comprehensive plan because of this.
Councilmember Davis?
I would just like to thank Councilmember Ambrose for her statement. I was, she just verbalized exactly what I was thinking. It is unfortunate. It's something that we've all wrestled with. But we have to do what's best for the, for the city and for the community to allow housing for, for folks. in the middle income.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. I too will be supporting the motion tonight. I think this was a very difficult decision to make, given as, I think Councilmember Ambrose articulated very well, where there's a drastic change happening in this community and that, a lot of that is actually not our decision, it's the school district's decision, and it was their property, and unfortunately, we cannot affect that decision in and of itself. And so then we're left with having to decide what to do with the comp plan change to change for what can be put there, and unfortunately, we cannot have, you know, a park there because we don't have the resources to do that, and I know that was a desire of the community. So this is what we are having to do, is change it to residential, and so I will be supporting that.
Councilmember Rupert.
Thank you. I'll be supporting this motion as well, because honestly, this is one closure of many that the school district has undertaken, and even if there was an inclination to try and do something with this property, we would be trying to do something with four or five properties just in our immediate part of Jeffco, and that, that isn't feasible. This will no longer be his school. It's heartbreaking for a community, it's heartbreaking for the family whose children went through those schools, and it may feel like this is sort of compounding the wound, and I absolutely appreciate that. But this is the right decision to turn this back into residential use, it's surrounded by residential area. The next question will be the nature of the use, but it certainly should be residential if it can't be used for public use like this. So I'll be supporting the motion.
All right. I too will be supporting this. You know, I agree, Councilmember Ambrose said it very well. It's incredibly difficult when schools close. It's not easy, and it's certainly not easy for all of you who live in that area. I remember when Allendale was closed in 2019. It's hard to believe it's been almost six years, or right at six years since that happened. It was the most brutal of all the school closures, and I can imagine that's left a pretty deep scar. It happened unexpectedly, right before the school was set to begin. It was a traumatic experience, I expect, for the neighborhood, as well as everyone who attended that school, worked at that school, and the school district, of which, Mr. Rupert, I believe you were a part of at that time. And so, we appreciate that. For six years, this property has sat vacant. It's been beautifully maintained by the district, and I appreciate that. But at the cost of a million dollars for that, for that time, as a fellow parent who has a child in Jeffco Public Schools, I would much rather see that million dollars going into our children's educations, their resources, and supporting the schools that remain open to this day. And so with that, I will be supporting the comp plan update because in terms of what things could be short of another school or early childhood center coming in of that nature, which is not common, it does happen, but it's not as common, short of something like that, residential house use is the least impactful use that is possible on these sites. So with that, all votes are cast, and the comp plan update passes seven to zero. Mr. Marriott, you have the next motion.
Move that Council Bill 25-020, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the City of Arvada, the former Allendale Elementary School, 5900 Oak Street, from City of Arvada RN 7.5 residential neighborhood to City of Arvada R6 Residential 6, and amending the official zoning maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, be approved on final reading, numbered 4906, and ordered published by title only. And I will make a couple comments here. So I wanna start off by, you know, I was on council when Jefferson County Schools elected to close some of their schools. You know, I think they've certainly suffered from demographic change, and those decisions were theirs to make, and I think they, you know, have done their best to make the best decisions that they could. Immediately from that time, when Allendale was one of the ones that was slated to be closed and then sold, there was lots and lots and lots of input from all corners about what should happen to these schools. And, you know, the possibility of the city taking them on and redeveloping them to a civic use is just completely not, not able, not practical, not able. You know, one of the largest parks in the whole city, the Stinger Letts Complex, is just down the street across from here. You can't just turn every vacant piece of ground into a park, as nice as that would be, I would love that, but it's, it's just not, just not possible. There's also then was lots of talk about, well, maybe this can be used to solve community problems, and certain members of the community have identified, you know, housing quantity as a community problem and that the council ought to do whatever it takes to solve housing quantity problems. And that would lead to very, very different development than what is being proposed here. And I think the difficulty here has been with these conversations about this and other school sites, is these competing sets of values, from those who live immediately adjacent who would like to see it be maybe left alone or provided to them as an amenity specifically to them, to on the other end of the spectrum, those who would like to see the densest, least expensive housing per unit that can possibly be put there, because in their view, that solves a different community problem. And I think these competing values create a wide range of potential suggested uses for a site like this, and really probably get out of, the ones on the fringes become out of the realm of possibility, and so the reality is somewhere located somewhere in the middle. I think in the end, our key, the key crux of the issue is we have to go to our land development code. And, you know, when I look at the applicable criteria here for rezoning, I find that this site meets all of them, each and every criteria as contained within the staff report. So, my finding is that. I'll also note that, you know, the crux appears to be, if this was three side-by-side lots within the existing neighborhood, it'd be quite easy to say, well, they should be developed exactly like the lots that are around it. I don't think there's any doubt about that, and I don't think, I think that's exactly what would happen. But there wouldn't be an open space requirement, and there wouldn't be, you know, the drainage would just be the existing drainage to the street and gutters, and it's a, it's a much different situation than what we have. Now, if this neighborhood was the edge of town and this was development, you know, going out into greenfields, I think it's also would be quite easy to designate how it should be developed. Neither of those are really the case here, though. This is a, a site that's surrounded, that's inside the neighborhood. For me, I find that it's large enough that it does not fit the mold of just developable lots within an existing neighborhood, that this is big enough to be a development unto itself. And I think, you know, the, all potential developers, not just this one, but everyone that looked at this site, you know, I'm sure they saw several different things. They saw the neighborhoods to the north and to the west, they also saw the duplexes to the east. They see in the very close proximity, they see the multifamily attached housing all over the place, and, and I'm sure they were attracted to many different possibilities of this. And when I look at the proposal that is before us now, I see this as a very, very well-thought-out, well-fitting option for this neighborhood. This is not multifamily housing, this is, this is single-family housing. This is not, you know, it's not duplexes, it's not, it's stuff that very much fits the character of the neighborhood. Now, it's also 60 or 70 years newer, and so it's obviously not gonna be the same, it's gonna, it's gonna fall along the lines of what the market allows today. And so for me, I can see it pretty clearly that this falls into the zone where this proposal is a good proposal, it certainly meets all the, all the applicable criteria, and so for that reason, I'll be voting yes. I also wanna add one other thing, and that was, I'd like to amend my own motion, if I may, to add a condition that the connection to the path that leads to Marge Roberts Park becomes part of the motion and part of the record.
You're free to do that. Councilmember Marriott, if you could connect that to one of our criteria, that would be great.
Yeah. I would add that condition using for criteria number three, so facilities and service will be, prior to development, will be available. I think that's a facility or a service, so I would connect that to number three. And number five, that the rezoning is consistent with the character of the existing neighborhood. Obviously, the connectivity to green spaces and parks is an important characteristic of this neighborhood, and to all practical purposes should be maintained.
Councilmember Davis, you wish to speak to the motion.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for everyone's hard work, staff, the developer. This is a logic versus emotion kind of decision, so it's very hard. And it's, for me, it's very emotional, too, just because I can understand change is hard, and when you're, when you're in the midst of it, it's, it's very emotional. So, thank you, Mr. Marriott, for your, for your remarks. You'll be missed, because those are just some really good points and discussion of this decision that we made. I will be supporting this, even as hard as this is, and I know that it's, it's difficult, but here we are. We're, I have a feeling we're gonna be doing this again in the near future with some of the other schools that are gonna go up for sale.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Thank you, your ma, Mayor. I will be voting against this by criteria five, because I do not think the lot size reflects the immediate neighborhood, and the nearby properties have increased density through duplexes and multifamily housing, and it's not that the, so the lot size of the current zoning, so i-if the developer had to follow the current zoning, that would cut between, I don't know, we didn't really get a hard number, 17 homes, or three homes, or 10 homes, or something like that, I didn't really hear a clear answer to that. What would change is the size of the homes and the price point of the homes that the developer said they would have to do to maintain their profits or to make the housing attainable. And I think that a more appropriate rezoning for, would be the duplexes, honestly, which does not look like 4,000 square foot lots, but they are, but it matches the character of the neighborhood, and so I think a more appropriate rezoning would be that mixed development where there's duplexes that keep the character in appearance of the lot size, like what is seen on the east side of this development where it, there are, it is zoned to smaller lot sizes, but it doesn't look like that. The other R6s in the city is different than what is being proposed here, and there isn't any R6 in the nearby area at all, with the lot sizes, again, that are the closest to it would be the duplex zoning. It's not multifamily, which is in the neighborhood, it's not duplexes, it's density achieved by single-family on smaller lots, which is not anywhere else in this neighborhood. And I think that, you know, this is what anybody in the neighborhood who is already under the 7.5, like, if they wanted to do something different, like, they, they would not be able to suddenly split into R6s and have, you know, be able to build two single-family homes on a lot like this, the way the developer's asking. And so I think that we should be treating the developer and the homeowners in the area the same way when they wanna redevelop the property. So I am voting against this rezoning based on criteria five.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. Echoing the sentiment of my fellow councilmembers of how difficult this decision is, but I appreciate the comments, and I appreciate Councilmember Ambrose's perspective. I, it reminded me of a neighborhood in my district where on one side of the street were single-family homes, the other side is duplexes, and you don't really know the difference, until you walk up to the, to the building, and then you realize it's a duplex. So, I think that Councilmember Ambrose raised some good points, and so I will be joining her as a no vote and going with criteria five as a reason for that, because I think that there could be some work that the developer could do to make it fit more with the area, the neighborhood community around it, and so I will be a no.
Councilmember Rupert.
Thank you. I'll be supporting the motion, and my reasons are as follows. I think, first, by definition, it satisfies criteria one. Criteria two through four, thank you, Mr. Marriott, for adding the trail as a requirement, as a condition. Criteria five is ticklish, as I was talking about in my earlier comments, and that is, what does character mean about preserving the character of a neighborhood? Is, is the, to you, the character of our neighborhood, the size of the lots, is it the, the style of the architecture? And it seems to me that what we are driving in creating the zoning, the six zoning, is we're requiring open space in lieu of private yards. Okay. I don't necessarily buy that it's our job to decide whether this should be a, a neighborhood of duplexes versus single-family homes. I don't think that's, that's our criteria. I don't think it's our job to decide what is more sellable in the market, either. That is up to the developers that are taking the risk on this, and, and I will say, I don't begrudge people from earning a profit on this. The houses that are there now were built for a profit, and profit motive is not a bad thing. It's what gets this sort of thing done. I think it's fair to ask those that are earning the profit to take the necessary steps to make it compatible as possible. I think, I think that's appropriate. But I'm supporting it because I think single-family residences are as close as we are going to get to the character you're trying to preserve and have the open space that's being required of the developer here. I think that's as close as we are going to get to preserving that character that we're hoping for.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
And I appreciate that, Councilmember Rupert. I mean, you know, what comes to mind is, when you say "character," I think of culture, too, because culture's hard, because we're set in a way, and "character" could be in the eye of the beholder, just like culture can be as well. And so, you know, the challenge here, I'll tell you, I've been teeter-tottering on the fence all through the night, because I, I see all sides of it, I've done this for a while, and, you know, one thing that we take serious here is our decisions are pretty much permanent once they kinda happen, right? I mean, I could tell you every development since I've been here that's been approved, I can tell you which ones I don't like, and I'm mad at myself, and I know the ones I did approve and I did like, or the ones we didn't approve and we should've approved. You know, we've been all over this emotional state with some of these, and we are only as good as the information here, and I always plore the builder that you need to be a good community partner. It's just plain and simple as that. And, and I will tell you right now, I will be watching your site plan, because it can call back up, and I will call it back up if I feel like you're just being lazy with utilities or just cutting corners just to make that profit, because moving those two houses over to the end, I don't think that was a good decision. I think that was a poor decision. I think you should've just cut the two out and been good with it, and instead he just rammed it right into open space, you know? So, you know, that's what makes me teeter-totter, is like, okay, what is your character for the neighborhood? But I also, on the flip side, understand the staff's point that have highlighted that any new development, we follow the R series of homes, and this is the closest one compatible to the neighborhood that is fitting. to the neighborhood that is fitting. The other thing I would add, being in these kind of things, sometimes, I think of the saying, the devil you know versus the devil you don't know, sometimes pops up around this, because we're dealing with somebody right now, right today, that may give us the best, closest character that we're looking for of however we define it. But if this doesn't happen, some other character can show up and do something completely different, and it could be something, nothing that is close to what maybe the community wants. So I appreciate the condition that has been put on it, because that was something I saw when I did the site survey. I saw that connection over there, and I was afraid it was just going to get boarded up. And one thing that I was concerned about is segregating the communities, and I thought that trail was something that kept it going. So I'd like to see that linkage go all the way east to west contiguous, so that those that are east of the property feel comfortable that they can walk through this property to get over to the other parks, to show that that's welcoming, even though the HOA is maintaining it. Seems a little weird, but let's just make sure that's open, and people feel that way. And staff knows, I will be driving by all the time, because I do remember these conditions. I do remember these discussions. I will bring up utility easements. I will look for the green boxes, and then they get annoyed by me, because then I'm like, hey, do you remember eight years ago when we approved this thing? They didn't do that thing that I was very clear on record that you should be doing. I'm not putting it as a condition, so it's nothing there, but, you know, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. That all being said, I have landed that I will support this, but I will be monitoring your progress on the site plan to see how well you are contiguous with the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pfeiffer. So, I, like my colleagues, I've struggled with this one, because I hear all of you. I understand where you're coming from, and I respect the position that you have. And I've been looking at this, and it's, it is, as Councilmember Davis said, emotion versus logic. And the logical decision, I have to look at it by, we are bound by simply what is an appropriate use of the site. That is this hearing. It is not the site plan itself that we really are deciding on tonight. There can be many changes still made to that site plan, and as Councilmember Pfeiffer accurately noted, it can be subject to call-up. And with this kind of sensitive site, we certainly would look at that option. So with this, you know, R6 is for newer parcels. Another thing we attempt to do with our zonings is make them progressive or gradual when we change zonings. This is why you don't see high-density apartment buildings slap next to single-family home neighborhoods in that sort of, like, harsh juxtaposition. So the 7.5 district currently makes way to RD, which, Councilmember Ambrose, I appreciate your thoughts on that matter with the duplexes, makes way to RD, which then makes way to the townhomes, which then makes way to the higher-density apartments. And so does R6, then, the question in my mind, become an appropriate additional barrier, or not barrier, excuse me, measure within, from the 7.5 to the RD, which as duplexes, is a higher density than single-family homes? And to me, as much as my heart is sad that I can't make everyone happy, because I really, truly wish I could, it's, the hardest thing to do is to not be able to give everybody everything that they want, but it is an appropriate progressive measure. What I would give guidance to the developer on, to continue to be a good partner, as we look at the solar study, if this is truly a mix of one-story and two-story homes, perhaps the one-stories go along that northern edge. Not only do they match the houses to the north and create that gentle transition, but we also alleviate any concerns about the solar panels. In addition, this site has a hill grade. Perhaps the two-story homes belong to the south side, where that way we're not interrupting or disrupting the height levels all over the place. It's more consistent across, and we're able to perhaps preserve some of those view corridors. I also gave consideration to the fact that R.75, yes, people have larger lots. They will have bigger yards. That's a very nice thing for those homeowners. What we would lose in the process is the open space for this neighborhood. That trade will be made, make no mistake. And so in order to preserve this park, this trail, this connectivity for the neighborhood, it is necessary to reduce the yard sizes for these lots. And so people will share the space communally, as opposed to it being fenced off privately. So with that, I will also be supporting this, but we will be watching this development closely to ensure that it doesn't have negative impacts on the neighborhood. So with that, I will call the vote, and that passes five to two with Councilmembers Ambrose and Council Mayor Pro Tim Mormon being dissenting votes. Thank you all very much. I know this is not easy. I appreciate you all coming out and sticking with us tonight.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So with that, I will close our public hearings and open it to public comment for a five-minute limit. If anybody in, we have no sign-ups. If anybody at chambers with this time would like to speak at the five-minute limit, you are, you are welcome to. And yes, you may tell us what you think of us. Nope, it is their right to tell us what they think of us, if they so choose. Come on, it's okay. Just name and address for the record.
John Frost, 6037 Owens.
Thank you.
I've served on a board. I understand, sometimes you got to make some uncomfortable decisions, so I'm not going to attack you personally. I would encourage you to hold this developer to every single promise that they've made. They say 28 feet, you just approved 35. So if it's 28 and a half, call them up. They promised you a charity. Make sure they deliver. You know, they made a lot of promises. You know, I understand, we all knew that we were going to get development there at some point, and I understand it was a hard decision, and, you know, okay, you know, you got to do what you got to do. But they told you what they were going to do. Hold them to it. Please hold them to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else in chambers like to speak at this time? Come on up.
My name's Ray Logan, 11079 West 59th Place. Excuse me. And I just have a question. So it's done, like they can now build 57 houses?
Generally speaking, we don't respond to questions during public comment, but no, this only allows the zoning. So now they have to take the site plan and work through the team, go through all the process, actually go through the detailed process. So, and then it has to be approved administratively. There are many, many more steps. Shovels will not be going in the ground tomorrow.
Are we a part of that? And I know it's not a Q and A, but do we get to go to those meetings?
I will, I will actually ask you, you know what, we're about to get out of here. Let's talk right after this.
Thank you.
Would anyone else in chambers like to give comment at this time? Seeing none, I will close second public comment and turn it over to City Council for reports. Councilmember Davis.
Okay, I made a promise to my, to my voters and supporters, that I would go through what I do on a regular basis, so that it made part of the public record. So I will start with the Adams County side of what I do. I attend the Adams County COG meetings, and what they do is they align the municipal insights. We get to visit and see what everybody's doing, and then we align our thoughts, and because part of Arvada is in Adams County, it's really important that we're part of that. I'm also on the Transportation Committee, and what we do is we align our transit opportunities. I also go to the Adams County Health Department Annual Meeting. This year was really dedicated to the Medicaid losses that may be coming up after the, after this year. I also went to the Early Childhood Partnership of Adams County, where we talked about the daycare deficit and early childhood learning deficits in Adams County, and I was shocked to hear about the infant mortality that's happening in Adams County. They, it was pretty shocking. I'll move on to the Jefferson County things that I do. Go to the Jefferson County EDC, which is complementary to the Arvada Economic Development Association, and has been instrumental in bringing manufacturing to Arvada. The Jefferson County Community Corrections Board makes critical decisions for folks entering community corrections to meet unique needs to reenter society. We meet once a month, and we hear approximately 20 cases to determine if they, if people are eligible to go into community corrections. The Jefferson County Transportation Action and Advisory Group, we meet because there are pockets of Arvada that are unincorporated, and so we want to make sure that we are, kept abreast of what's going on in the thought process of Jefferson County transportation. We coordinate with Apex Parks and Recreation to make sure that we're all on the same page when we're moving forward on things. Moving to the statewide or region-wide, I sit on the Denver Regional Council of Governments. We've really been talking about micro-mobility, transportation, housing, and growth in the region, and trying to bridge some of the gaps as a regional approach to those things. The Colorado Municipal League Board, I am the representative to the board on the large cities, so that cities greater than 100,000 population. We've been really looking at local control support, and also identifying growing gaps between the lack of funding from the feds, and housing affordability, trying to bridge, talk about growth with the need for housing in every part of this region. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from council? I appreciate that. I appreciate that. But, you know what, it gives everybody a good glimpse into all the different things that we do. Every single council member up here has that many board assignments, has that many things that we do. So I actually really appreciate this, because it's sort of a little bit of a glimpse into what our lives look like. So seeing, are there any other, seeing no other council report? Oh, no, are you, Bob? You did, you did. And I went to the DNI Summit and the Urban Renewal. We'll be here all night. All right. Mr. Wick, anything from you?
Just about 20 minutes. No, I don't, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Oh, the AVS are playing, and apparently they are up to nothing, I'm hearing. So come on. Ms. Morris, anything from you?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
All right, we stand adjourned.